All right. The March 10, 2025 regular meeting of the Malibu City Council is now called to order. In-person participants, if you'd like to speak, please submit your request to Speak Forum to the clerk. Remote participants, if you'd like to speak, please join the Zoom webinar meeting printed on the agenda and raise your hand in Zoom when the item you wish to speak on is called. May we have a roll call?
Councilmember Conrad?
Here.
Councilmember Silverstein?
Present.
Councilmember Euring?
Here.
Mayor Protem Riggins?
Here.
Mayor Stewart?
Here.
You have a quorum.
All right. Do we have any speaker cards or call-in speakers?
No public commenters.
All right. Public comments closed. With that, we'll now recess the closed session to discuss the items listed on the closed session agenda. We'll reconvene at 5:30 to begin the regular session and hear the closed session report.
canopy all the way to the sea surface, full of lobster.
The end
Good evening, everybody. We're a few minutes late, but we'll try and catch up here. The March 10, 2025 regular meeting of the Malibu City Council is now called to order. In-person participants, if you'd like to speak, please submit your request to speak form to the clerk. Remote participants, if you'd like to speak, please join a Zoom webinar meeting printed on the agenda and raise your hand in Zoom when the item you wish to speak on is called. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Conrad?
Here.
Councilmember Silverstein?
Present.
Councilmember Euring?
Here.
Mayor Protem Riggins?
Here.
Mayor Stewart?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Let's see. Norm, can you lead us in the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Norm. All right. May we have a closed session report, please?
Yes, at 4:45 PM, the City Council met an open session, recessed to closed session. That is listed on the posted agenda. All five council members were present and no reportable action was taken.
Thank you. May we have a report on the posting of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on March 5 and amended on March 7.
All right. May I have approval of the agenda? Do you have a motion?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a second. Any discussion being done, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Being done, motion approved. All right, let's now consider the consent calendar. Remote participants, please raise your hand in Zoom if you'd like to speak on an item on the consent calendar. And I have a couple speaker cards, so we'll get started on those. First one up is Joe Drummond. And it's going to be followed by Dean.
So this is for one B9, right?
This is... Oh, you're going to speak on B9, yes.
Okay, I just was noting a few things. On page two and three and five, they describe what the consultants will be doing with the imposed deadlines, which is good. But the compensation for these services should not be incentivized to go past the three reviews or to be delayed. Like, maybe they should have some kind of a salary or a cap or something so that they are not incentivized to keep giving a review. That's basically what I'm saying there. And then on page 18, we should be clear on when a biological review is triggered or required. Like, if it's... I just don't... Unless it's in ESHA, I don't know why a biological review would be required. Maybe Mary Ann might know. And then need hours beyond just Tuesdays from 9 to 11 in City Hall. That's what seems like the biologist is only available for. And on page 20, how much is the rate for just a planning verification? I don't even think it is necessary for a planning verification if it's just replacing what was there. And on page 28, why can't we just copy Epic LA and what they're doing with the uploading of our information and all our documents and everything? Like, I mean, it's there and it's working. And San Bernardino also has a nice system as well where you can just upload everything. It works well to track our applications online and upload docs, et cetera. And I think everything else seems fine. Just with the reviews, if there's some sort of deadline on when the reviews can be completed and a cap on what they can charge, that would be good. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the clock, by the way, I don't think was running that time. All right, Dean, please.
My momma could be watching if you could say the last name.
I'm not going to...
Wenner.
Wenner. Thank you, but it'd be better from him.
Wenner, Wenner.
Okay, I intend to talk about 3, 4, 9, and 10 because I understood I had to do it all at one time within time limit. So, item three, approval of minutes. Forgive me if I'm wrong, but what I'm seeing on the docket is approval of the December 9 minutes. I appreciate a lot's happened since then, a couple of fires. But I'm wondering how up to date are we with the minutes? I'm hoping we honor ourselves as being best in class and do things within like 24 to 48 hours with minutes after each meeting so that we can keep track of things. Item four, declaration existence of the emergency. I'd like you guys to look into a little bit from an investigatory point of view about the fire. I'm a little troubled when I read the words that it says was driven into city limits by a historic Santa Ana wind event. I don't think that was true. I was on Big Rock till 7:15. I watched it go on all day long. There weren't very high winds. When I left about 7:15, there were some high winds that hit me on one of my decks, but they started late. Big Rock was on fire probably 4:00, 4:30, if not before that. So I know what I may be saying isn't 100% accurate. It's my perception, I haven't been there. I'd ask you guys to look into it because the way this is worded, you're contributing that it was a big wind event when I believe, and a lot of people believe, it was that people failed to give us the services they were required to render. It's not the high winds. So I ask you to look into that because that document's very important. Item nine on professional services. I'll keep it brief. I see a lot of things with hiring. It's good. We need more help. The report acknowledges that we're behind. We need more people. One of the solutions is a czar. We need to have more discussions about a czar. We need to have the community involved with it. Maybe it's a four or five-person panel, I don't know, but we're spending too much time talking about it and not getting to it. Item 10, support for the letter to the governor. I love it. However, just like I said about the last letter, please take a look at it. I'm afraid we could get ridiculed. I remember during COVID when Mikey Pearson did one and they sat on the Senate floor making fun of us because we're a bunch of rich people and things we wanted. I'm afraid the same thing could happen. And the reason being, the words in this letter talk about bureaucratic delays. I'm not throwing shade on anybody. A lot of good things have been done, but we don't have any results yet. Lot of discussion, not results. So we're being bureaucratic when we're making requests saying we're not going to be and we're doing our very best removing them. We're not. Again, I'm not throwing shade. I want to be a part of the solution. But the way this is worded, we're not standing up to what we're asking for. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that takes care of the speaker slips. Do we have any one online?
There's no raised hands.
All right. Bring it back up to the dais. Public comments are closed. Do we have anybody who wants to pull anything on the consent calendar? Being done, I have a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Being done, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Being done, the motion is approved. Consent calendar is approved. All right, let's move over to the part that I always enjoy, and that's giving out awards and plaques and so forth. So... If I could, I'd like to have Renika come forward. And we actually have a doubleheader tonight, so... Major Podium.
Thanks.
All right, I'm going to stand in front of the microphone here, but I'm going to read a little something. And I'm going to let you hold it.
Oh.
All right, but that's as close you can get. All right. So I want to read a little background on Renika. She returned to the city of Malibu in March of 2018 as an associate planner. She was subsequently promoted to senior planner in 2022 and most recently to principal planner in 2024. Renika holds a bachelor's degree from Cal Poly San Luis Obispo.
Phil Mustaine?
Oh, I can see the float now. All right. And in the city of regional... And she majored in regional planning. Additionally, Renika achieved the American Institute of Certified Planners certification. That's an AICP. She did that in 2023. As a principal planner, Renika oversees a team of contract and city planners serving as a supervisory leader for the planning department. Renika has assisted in developing and implementing policies and regulations relating to land use, including the city's general plan and local coastal plan, specific plans, zoning annexations, and other pertinent ordinances and policies. She's also assist with the preparation and presentation of staff reports for the city council, the planning commission, and other advisory bodies. As a principal planner, Renika acts as a backup liaison to the city's planning commission. She's been a dedicated member of the planning department and a pillar of institutional knowledge. She has been with the city through some of the most challenging times as she facilitated the city's implementation of Measure G, the voter initiative that passed in 2018 to regulate commercial cannabis activities in the city. Moreover, she oversees faculty facility planning compliance for SMUSD. That's the school board, which has included decommissioning the former Juan Cabrillo Elementary and Point Dume Elementary schools to create the current Malibu Elementary School. She processed legislative amendments to implement the Malibu middle and high school specific plan. You've been busy. She processed the entitlements for the construction of the Malibu High School building and associate development. Further, she's assisted the city in responses to the Woolsey-Franklin and now the Palisades fire. Please join me in thanking Renika Brooks for her seven years of service to the city of Malibu. All right, Renika, congratulations. All right, you want to say a few words?
Sure. Wow, I am blown away. You know, I was kind of just reflecting on, you know, how in several religious texts, the number seven is... It signifies significant transformation, which is usually marked by dedication, like devotion and spiritual growth. And undoubtedly, that describes my experience, both personally and professionally as a planner. I am humbled and honored to work alongside some amazing colleagues and friends. They for sure are dedicated staff and genuinely care about the well-being of the city. And lastly, I want to give a shout out to my nine-year-old son, Denari. You better be doing your homework, you know? And the village that continues to support me on my late Monday nights at planning commission and city council meetings. And really, lastly, I want to thank the council and I want to thank the city and city management for the opportunity to continue to serve the city. Thank you so much.
And for those of you who didn't see it, it looks like this, all right? Okay. Renika, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
All right, we've got a... As I said, we have a doubleheader. So Tyler, come on down. You get to hold yours, too.
All righty.
And his looks very similar, by the way, to the one you just saw a moment ago.
Yeah.
All right.
Same thing.
Okay, so I'm going to read the little story here. Tyler joined the city of Malibu in January of 2018 as an intern. Seemed like 2018 was a good year for the city. And later in June 2018, he was hired as a planning technician. In 2020, Tyler was promoted to assistant planner and served until he was promoted to associate planner in July of '22. Tyler continued to excel and in November 2022, he was promoted to a senior planner and most recently is promoted to a principal planner in 2024. Tyler holds a bachelor's degree in history and a master's degree from California State University Northridge, CSUN, and urban planning. As a principal planner, Tyler serves as a supervisory leader for the planning department, overseeing city and contract planners. Tyler has assisted in developing and implementation of policies and regulations relating to land use, including the city's general plan and local coastal plan, specific plans, zoning annexations, and other pertinent ordinances and policies. He also assists with the preparation and presentation of staff reports for the city council, planning commission, and other advisory bodies. It goes without saying that Tyler has been dedicated to the city of Malibu. We have recently seen his dedication as he spearheaded the Fire Rebuild Code amendments we heard last week. Through his hard work, Tyler has made many contributions to the city working on several significant projects, including, but not limited to, helping with the city's housing element certification, working directly with HCD on the governor's executive order for fire rebuilds, assisted with the wireless communications ordinance and helped develop the wireless application process, and assisted with Water Works District 29 capital improvements. We've seen Tyler grow with the city for the past seven years. And please join me in thanking Tyler Eaton for his seven years of service to the city of Malibu. And I'll just add one thing. Last week was a marathon, and here's our champion runner. All right.
Thank you, Mayor. Nope, sorry.
All right, say a few words.
Sure. You guys saw me a lot last week, so I'm going to keep it brief. But yeah, ditto what Renika said. You know, it's been an honor to serve the city, to represent the city at our APA conferences when we meet with the state. The city is truly a leader in coastal, hillside, and environmental planning at large. And it really is an honor to serve the residents of Malibu. And I really want to thank the residents of Malibu. You've made me a very considerate planner. As Renika said, our whole staff is very considerate. And it's because how much you guys all care. So I appreciate you all, and thank you.
As I've said before, that's the fun part of this job. Probably the most fun is to recognize people like Tyler and Renika. So thank you very much. My gosh, they're all leaving.
Thank you, Renika and Tyler.
Thank you.
It's great having your leadership here.
All right, commission and committee and city manager updates. Do we have any commission or committee reports?
We have none, Mayor.
All right. City manager update, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and I also want to thank Renika and Tyler. They are truly leaders of this organization and that department. And you could see it by all the staff here to support them, how much care and love for each other is here. So we have a great team and we're really proud of them. Not to shift gears too drastically, but we do have rain coming this week, starting on Tuesday, but we're anticipating the highest intensity to be on Wednesday. The National Weather Service is currently reporting that it could be a half inch or more per hour, but that remains to be seen until we get closer to the storm event to just see how intense it will be. So that could bring some debris flows. The county is providing sandbags. There are self-serve bags available, sand and bags available at the library. There should be plenty there. Also, our public works department, since the last debris event, has been working around the clock to clear storm debris basins, storm drains, and our streets. You still see some debris left over from the last event, but they have worked hard to clear everything so that we can have proper flow through our drain system with this next event. There's... They have been putting out additional sandbags, K rails, and equipment in the Franklin and Palisades areas. And also, our street maintenance crews have already been scheduled to be working 12-hour shifts starting on Wednesday to address any concerns throughout the storm event. So we are making sure that we are prepared as possible. On a positive note, our community development director recruitment is now open. That has been posted and that'll close on April 6, so we will be going through that recruitment. Also, on a positive note, LA County voted for an eviction moratorium in place. That's a real positive for the whole county. So that motion provides temporary eviction protections for workers and small business owners who demonstrate financial hardship due to the fires and are actively seeking relief. The motion from the county calls for $10 million to be directed towards rent relief countywide. And the protections now include a six-month protection period ending July 31, 2025, and philanthropic... philanthropic... I can't say that word. Dollars be solicited to augment rent relief for impacted tenants with a report rented... with a report returning to the board in 15 days on the development of the financial parameters of a fund to be managed by a third-party fiscal sponsor. fiscal sponsor, and relief funds for non-payment of rent will be directed to landlords on behalf of tenants. So that's a real positive motion from the county. Also, a very positive item to report, the Rebuild Center opened today to much fanfare. We actually had 20-plus appointments today on the first day. It was really positive, great collective coordination from all departments, and I know our applicants were excited to be able to meet with all departments at once and get some good direction. So a really nice start today. And we will be having an open house Wednesday, March 19th, 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., so please join us there if you want to walk around and get a tour and a sense of the Rebuild Center. And also a reminder, our adjourned council meeting for the hearing of the second reading of the local coastal plan and the zoning text amendment will be on Wednesday, March 12th, at 11:00 a.m. We have a building design professionals town hall also on Wednesday, March 12th. That'll be at 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. And then we're starting weekly neighborhood-specific community meetings that'll be on Tuesday nights. More info to follow, and we'll be populating those on our events calendar on the Rebuilds page. And then again, the Rebuild Center open house Wednesday, March 19th, 5:00 to 7:00. And we also have an SCE Town Hall on the evening of Thursday, March 20th. And again, more information will be posted on the events page on malaburebuilds.org, and we'll continue to update information on that site for all things Rebuilds. So please remember to go to malaburebuilds.org. Thank you. And Mayor, I don't see the sheriff here tonight, so I don't think we have a sheriff's report tonight.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Couple quick questions. Joe, the supervisors ordinance that dealt with rent protection, are we sure that covers small businesses? Because when I read it, I read the headline, then you read the detail, and there, I just don't know.
We were under the impression both, but I know we were still trying to digest all the full impacts, and I see that my, our deputy city manager stepped up to the microphone. She must have more information.
So the short answer, council member hearing, is no. The press release did cite small business. Unfortunately, though, at our city attorney's review of the ordinance itself, it is only for residential rent protection. So should this council want to consider anything specific, we'll need to do that as a collective body yourselves for any commercial tenant protections.
Yeah, I thought we had requested going to the county and asking for rent protection for small businesses, so we should follow up on that. I mean, I think that, look, you know, I have not heard anybody say the small businesses are doing very well. So the more protection we can give them, the better off we're going to be. Another question. With this Rebuild Center, what kind of data are you collecting in terms of what's going on in that Rebuild Center?
It's pretty, council member hearing, Brad, I mean, we are, we are there to receive applicants.
Here's what I'm looking for.
Yeah.
I'd like to know, look, this is one of the most important things the city is going to have to do. And if we don't do it right, okay, we run into a whole bunch of problems. And I'm not sure how well it's going to work, how well the rebuild process is going to work. And I'd like to have information about what's going on ahead of time versus after the fact, because if the things we have to do, the better information we have, the more better able we're going to be to make good decisions. So I'd like to know, on a, you know, on a weekly basis, when we get these meetings, how many people came in for like-for-likes? And what neighborhoods did they come from? Should be able to get that information, right? I'd like to know how many people came in for permits above a like-for-like, and what neighborhoods they came in from. I'd like to get an idea of how many properties are up for sale, and that we should be able to get that from the realtors. But I think that kind of information will give us some perspective of what the heck is going on in the city, what the rebuild process looks like, how fast we're moving forward, and if we have to make additional decisions, what decisions do we have to make? This is an information process. We just got to get, I want to make sure we are staying as smart as we can as we go through this process. So if you could make sure we get that information, I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you. And I'm the rest of the council cares, but I do.
Would like an ad hoc or some sort of committee be helpful to you?
Well, we already have one.
Oh, for the, for that information gathering? I don't know.
We already have a committee.
Oh.
Yes, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Euring, for those suggestions. I think they were good suggestions. We'll definitely be tracking numbers on who comes in. I don't know about a weekly basis, and some of the, some of the information, we may not know what they're applying for right off the bat, because they may be coming in just for general information or appointments to go over their plans. So we may not know.
The ones that are applying, where they came from, what they've applied for, and how many of them. And we should, I don't care, I don't want to get on a weekly basis, but every, every city council meeting, we should get an update on that information, because I do believe it's very important. So that's my take.
I do have a, so these are great meeting series. I think it's wonderful. I would like to add or get consensus on adding a Woolsey affected workshop, where we can have those homeowners that are still kind of struggling through the process to come and hear them out.
You know, you might, just a comment, the last one, Franklin Broadfire Code Amendments, those apply to Woolsey as well. You might just add Woolsey to that.
That would be great.
Yeah, as a, as a team, we can definitely look at adding one or merging or however we need to do it.
Maybe just merge it together. All right.
Does that mean that somebody reaches out to those applicants from the city?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Can we just get a commitment, we're going to get that information I asked for?
Yes, we'll do our, I don't know what stats we have off the bat, but I'll do my best to have some gathering of information. I don't know the frequency of that just yet, but we'll do our best.
Who is managing the Rebuild Center, do you know?
Right now, it's City Manager's Office. That was the presentation we provided a few weeks ago.
Okay, thank you.
Mary Ann, do you want to say something?
Nope.
Oh, okay. By the way, on the red relief, that was done by the county for all 88 cities in the county. So we're swept up in that, and I agree. You read the press release, it looks like it's got relief to small businesses, and that was our first inclination until we got the actual document itself. All right, the sergeant has arrived. Where do you? We were stalling until you got here, so.
Hopefully for not too long. Good evening, City Council. Couple items to talk about. So I have the February crime statistics for the City of Malibu. There were 42 reported Part I crimes year-to-date for February, and that's a 40.8% decrease year-over-year. Obviously, the numbers are skewed because of the fire, but those are the numbers. I have an update on a burglary which occurred in 2023 in the western part of Malibu. In this burglary, a house under construction was burglarized and tools and equipment were taken, and our DNA evidence tech went out and processed the scene. And in this case, the suspect left sunglasses near the pointed entry. Our DNA tech swabbed the bridge portion of the sunglasses where they sit on the nose of, for skin DNA, which resulted in a hit of a Jeremaya Monstein, a male white born 1980. And his, he has no known last address, and he's a transient. And the suspect is a parolee and career criminal, and some of his priors include shoplifting, possession with the intent to distribute, vehicle theft, battery, resisting arrest, cruelty to a child, domestic violence, proceeding stolen property, grand and petty theft, possession of brass knuckles, and a host of other traffic narcotic and parolee violations. So a warrant has been entered in the system for his arrest. So I bring this up because no matter whether a crime happened a week ago, a month ago, or years ago, we still don't stop pursuing justice. So good reminder here, two years ago, so. A couple other topics. A mountain lion was hit and killed on Cannon Doom yesterday near the tunnel. So just a reminder, slow down, there's wildlife. The wildlife bridge is coming along, so hopefully that will be done sooner than later. Also, we've had a couple earthquakes along Decker Canyon, so it's a good reminder to have an emergency plan and a go-bag ready to go, not just for earthquakes, but for fires or mudslides. With that, we'll talk in a little bit about storm prep for the upcoming storm. But Parker, I sent you, if you can click on that, there's some important deadlines coming up for wildfire recovery. Let's see if this pop up. If you go to recovery.lacounty.gov, let me see if it pops up online, there's some important dates coming up. Oh, there you go. So March 12th, two days from now, it's the deadline to apply for LA County Household Relief Grant Funds and Small Business Relief Funds. So that's in two days from now, and also for Worker Relief Funds. And then at the end of this month, Small Business Disaster Loans for physical damage and FEMA Financial Assistance. So I just want to remind people those deadlines are coming up and to put your application Finally, we are down to three days a week for pass distribution for PCH access, so Tuesday and Thursdays at Santa Monica Satellite Campus here in Malibu, right down the street. That's 10 a.m. to 4 p.m. And then on Sundays, we're here at Malibu City Hall from 10 a.m. to 4 p.m. So if you haven't gotten a pass yet, you can come.
Saturday.
I'm sorry, Saturday, correct. Saturday, here at City Hall from 10 a.m. to 4 p.m. So we'll be manning that. And there is a pretty significant storm coming up here in a few days that's projected. So get your sandbags now. There's multiple sandbag distribution centers, and we expect mud and debris flows with the storm if it pans out the way they're forecasting, so be prepared for that. And that is all I have, so I'm available for questions.
If you could talk for just a moment about the passage on PCH as far as how that's going, and anything about who's getting passes and so forth. I know you changed the protocol in West LA.
Right, so there's, we have now one universal pass between us and the City of Los Angeles. Prior to this, we had separate passes between the county and the city. So now we have one universal pass. Your old passes are still good, they're still being honored, but you can come get a new one if you have some of the old ones. It's got the city seal and the county seal and Sheriff's Department badges and LAPD badges on them. They're for residents in the affected burn zones, it's not for commuting, and it's also for essential businesses. And so you asked what essential is. What's essential to one person might not be essential to another person, and so we take it on a case-by-case basis. We're cognizant of the fact that there are small businesses, there's employees. We're trying to get Malibu back on its feet again and get back to whatever normal feels like now. So we're cognizant of that fact, and so that's where we're at with the passes.
Mayor, I have a quick question. Is there any chance of moving the Charlie checkpoint away from the small businesses that are being affected by carbon? So I, it's the Pilates place, it's the liquor store, it's those shops right there. Maybe move it further south?
We had discussed that, however, in that stretch right there, it's a straightaway, and so it's high visibility for the deputies and the National Guard soldiers that are standing out in the roadway. And so it's a good turnaround place, so it has to stay there. And if you go a couple hundred feet down the road, that's the first impacted house, so that's where the checkpoint has to be.
Thank you.
Mayor? Yes? Sergeant, quick question. I've been, I live up on the hill, so I see that the National Guard's bailing out, or they're cleaning out their location there. I mean, and I'm getting emails from people that are identifying people trying to come in and rob them, right? I mean, from some of the burnt-out houses. Apparently, I read something today, they're taking bicycle trips up the back of the canyons and sneaking over the hills. I mean, are you guys prepared to try and just protect us as much as you can going forward?
I would say if somebody sees somebody suspicious or doing suspicious actions, call us immediately. Call 911 and report that, and we'll respond immediately. Obviously, we can't be everywhere at once, but we have, we have additional staffing, we have additional patrols, we have additional saturation as well as the National Guard for how much longer they're here. So please tell people to call us immediately, we'll go out and respond and handle it appropriately.
Cool, thank you very much.
If I could make a comment about the National Guard, I've spoken to the commander there several times, Lieutenant Colonel, and they've done a shift of deployment. The original group that was here was Army MPs, and they've now been replaced, or I forgot the right word for it, but they've been released from duty, and another group has come in, all still California National Guard, but the California Air Reserve has come in with their, I'm going to date myself, air police, and now Air Force Special Security. And they're supplementing the support group of another National Guard unit. Together, they're providing the security and plan to be here, I believe, through the 14th, and it's going to be extended potentially after that.
That's correct, Mayor.
So we've got them in place here. This location is actually, for all the National Guard deployment all the way to the City of Los Angeles, there are approximately 300 soldiers on deployment here. And they've moved from the tactical vehicles, the Humvees, to pickup trucks to be a little bit more civilian compliant. But the new group, just as a side note, is not sidearm weapon-trained, M16s only. So we may have made a statement with that. But they're, they're still in force, they're still deployed just as they were. The only difference is it's another, another group of units that are in place. Okay? Anybody else have anything? All right, Sergeant, thank you very much.
You're welcome. I just have one last thing to close with. Paradise Cove is hosting on March 15th from 11 a.m. to 4 p.m. It's called the Day of Hope, and anybody affected by the wildfire can come there for a free meal and be a part of the community, so.
All right, thank you very much. All right. Do we have any other comments before we take a break? If not, public comments start at 6:30. We're going to adjourn for a few minutes till 6:30 sharp, and we'll be back in session and have public comments at that point. Thank you. Now that we have our legal counsel back, we can start, four minutes late. I'd like to have a, see if we have a motion to move the skate park, item 7A, to now. We have quite a number of speakers ahead, and I think the kids would like to go to sleep on a successful event. So if I could have a motion to-
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, you've got a second. All in favor of moving 7A to now? Say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Being none? Let's go talk about the skate park, 7A. By the way, anybody has any speaker subs on 7A, please turn them in now. We'll keep taking them until we get through the staff report because we moved it around. Thank you. Kirsten, go ahead.
My coworker, Rob DeBeau, will give the information regarding the project, but I will start us off with-
There he comes. Sorry, Rob, we wanted to make sure the kids got to sleep on time.
Go ahead. Good evening, counsel. Tonight, we have a couple items for you, or actions for you. One of them is to approve the award of the construction of the permanent skate park. Back in, we received bids for this project. Bids came in about 4.1 million. The contractor is, let me get his, is, sorry, CS Legacy Construction, they put in a bid 4.1 million, and the result of that put us in a shortfall of funding of about 2.9 million. On, on March 6th, staff brought an item to A&amp;F to request additional funding for this project. A&amp;F has agreed to, or recommended approval for the additional funding. So tonight, we are looking for final approval for the award of the skate park and the additional appropriation of approximately $2.9 million to the project. With this, the staff will start preparing and working on getting the contractor going and working on this project so we can get this completed. With this also too, I'm going to pass over to Kristen where she can talk about the naming rights.
Thank you, Rob. As part of this project award, counsel is being asked to review and provide direction to staff regarding the naming rights. If counsel determines that the permanent skate park is eligible for naming rights, the staff report lists the factors that require additional direction from you all. So I think that concludes our report. We're happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions from the dais before we go to public comments?
What additional direction do you need for naming rights?
Thank you. First of all, you have to determine if it's eligible, so yes or no. Direct staff to proceed with donor outreach, and then as part of the naming rights policy, that is part of the Parks and Recreation Commission's option to review potential donors' names, terms, and then we're asking you to provide us with a threshold if that was possible for the naming rights.
Threshold?
Threshold?
Threshold for what? I mean, how, the minimum contribution you should look for?
Correct, sir.
Okay, I'm just trying to make sure I understand. I'm sorry, go ahead.
And then the last part is if you want to determine any other funding sources.
Got you. Okay, now that you've brought up the naming rights, do you have a time when you want to ask us for the thresholds, or is that going to be another presentation?
No, that's just as part of the bullet points of all the things I need from you.
So we'll talk about that tonight?
Yes.
Just want to get a clear-
Can I ask the city attorney a question? Isn't that the kind of thing you do in closed session because it's a potential negotiation with respect to the sale of something?
The naming rights in terms of the negotiation?
Yeah. Isn't that like when we buy or sell a property? I mean, why would we say publicly what our floor is?
Happy to look into it, but I don't believe there's an exception to the Brown Act that would apply to, it's not for the sale of real property.
So we couldn't not be eligible to talk about it tonight, then?
No, I'm saying I'm not sure there's a way that we get into closed session to discuss the naming rights.
So you're saying closed session's not required, then?
It's never required. It's saying it's, I don't think there's an exception that would allow us to-
Well, how's that different than when we're looking to buy or sell a parcel of land?
Because it's an interest in real property. The naming rights aren't real property. It's negotiating like any of the contracts that we have to do-
Okay.
-in public. You can, you could delegate an ad hoc to go and, you know, work with the different parties and then come back to the council with a recommendation.
Okay, any other-
Well, I have a follow-up question on that. So the item earlier for naming rights, it does have a threshold section? Were those just suggestions in there?
That is correct, yes.
Okay.
Okay, let's, we're going to get into nitty-gritty, we need to wait till extra public comments. Haylen, you have any comments? Okay, all right, let's have public comments. The first one up is Norm Haney, followed by Skylar Peak.
Honorable council members, you know, the city has been waiting for a skateboard park for many, many years, probably close to 30 years. And this is the opportunity. I hope we can find the funding, of course, and I like the idea of raising money through the naming rights. But I'm strongly in support of the skateboard park, and I hope it's approved. Thank you.
Skylar, you're up next, followed by Scott Dietrich.
First off, I just wanted to say thank you all for getting it to this point. I'm sorry to the skateboarders that I didn't get it done when I was in office, but I think this is kind of an example of what happens when you don't act on something and get it done, and it goes from costing like $400,000, $500,000 to $4 million. So let that be a lesson to all of us in how things change and things get more expensive. I also really wanted to hope that if you do any foreign thing with naming rights, that you don't make it something that's super long-term. And I think that you should just call it the Malibu Skate Park. I think it's, it's very simple. We don't need to make it super complicated. And the kids, the adults, you know, I was, ran into a friend the other day that's almost 60 years old, and he's like, "When are they going to do it? When are they going to do it? Are they going to do it? Are they going to do it?" And I just, I think that you don't always understand the value of action or extreme sports in Southern California, and that's kind of shaped a lot of the culture that I and others that are a lot older than me have grown up in. And I think it's really important for us to set that example as a community where it's adjacent to where, you know, skateboarding kind of, I'm not saying it originated, but when those kids were skating down the gulches after a fire, or the pools after a fire in Malibu, you're now going to give them, you know, a lot of that stuff originated in those kinds of things. So please go ahead and approve this, and I look forward to seeing many kids and many adults having a good time. And let's not forget that we had an Olympic athlete that grew up in this town, Tom Shar, and he had to move away from our town because we didn't get that done. And he represented, you know, our country and the world and did really well, but that's because we didn't get our act together, so, thank you. And I think it gives us, I said this morning when I was talking at the composer's breakfast, like, there's a lot of darkness that's come over Malibu this year, and this gives us a little bit of light and a little bit of a step in the right direction, so thank you.
Thank you. All right, Scott Dietrich's up next, followed by Pamela Conley York.
Skateboarding is not a crime. Good evening, thank you, Mayor, City Council members. Like Skylar, we worked on this when I was, gosh, City Council 20 years ago or something? And I don't think Tom Shar and Regan, their family, moved just because of the skate parks. There are some other factors, but I remember when I would go to the Papa Jack's Skate Park with Tom and my kids, and it's about time. And I think that as far as for sale, Malibu's not for sale. This is the city of Malibu Skate Park. I think we can be creative. If Etnies or others want to donate, let's hope it's not that Red Bull. Was that that red? That sugar water? Seriously, like, maybe you can do creative ramps, but the skate park owns, it's Malibu's, it's not Red Bull or whoever else. So there should be no price on that, and I hope as you consider these naming rights, we paid for it. Let's be honest, the people of Malibu, you need to fund it tonight. We have over 22 million from the library funds. Let's put a library, a little, a library, we have some on our street on Boniface, and use some of that funds. Let's be creative and have skate scholars. Wouldn't that be awesome? Right? So I would urge you to look at those funds as well when we're looking at being creative for using some of that to help fund this and get this done. Tom Shar, you know, maybe we can, when you dedicate it, he can come back with his silver medal. And it's like Skylar said, this is a great opportunity for our kids to have a safe place. Even the old people, maybe I'll go and try skating. I think- I think everyone should try it. I think when I went to UCSD, I had a lot of friends and it was a crime at UC San Diego, University of California, San Diego. My friends almost did get arrested. And I am not afraid to skate, so I will be skating. When somebody said no, that just makes me say, "I'm going now." So, thank you for your time and service and let's get this done, but let's not name it anything other than Malibu Skate Park. Thank you.
Thank you. By the way, the urgent carries just down the street. All right. I couldn't resist. Do we have anybody on the...
There are three raised hands. First is Howard Rucksky.
All right. Howard, please go ahead.
Hi, guys. Please approve this tonight. It's about time. And after all, it's gone on the last three, four months. It'll give people hope and something to look forward to. Thank you.
Thank you, Howard. Who's next, please?
Andy Lian.
Andy, go ahead, please.
Hi, can you hear us?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Yeah. First of all, we're glad it wasn't feeling well tonight. He really wanted to be down there to see you guys fund this thing. What do you want to say?
I want a skate park.
Okay. Anyways, a couple of things. First of all, yeah, we don't need to name it. You just said in the A and F that you've got the money for it. We don't need to go and shop this around so somebody can put their name on it. It is the Malibu Skate Park. Unfortunately, we're here now, you know, it should have already been taken care of. It's gone on way too long. One of the things that I want to make sure of is that we end Scott Gillen's parking agreement right away. I don't want to see, that ties into the temporary skate park. I don't want to see the temporary skate park get taken out while they do the construction. The temporary skate park should be moved to another location in Malibu, but not until the ground, not until the ribbon cutting and the permanent skate park is finished. We shouldn't have to go without because of that. All that parking that Scott Gillen's been using on that should be used for Little League and the park. That would be the only thing I could, I could add to, to that. I know I was thinking of something else, but it's been so long overdue. Glider is there every single day. I skate, I, my whole life in Malibu, I wanted a skate park. I've been skateboarding my whole life and it'll sure be nice. I, I hope to still be skateboarding when you get this thing done. You know, I go and skate with him at the Malibu one and I have to go to other skate parks too with him all the time, but it'll really be nice to have this finally done. So let's just do it. There's no excuse not to have it. We don't need a name. It's the Malibu Skate Park. What else? What do we need to do? Let's, yeah, and boot Gillen off that, that parking area. He's done. Yeah, I want to, and I want to thank Steve and Bruce for supporting that and unfortunately not being able to push it through when it should have, when, when Gillen got delayed. So let's just do it tonight. Get the money and go start building it. And thank you, thank you all. Bye.
Okay. Thank you very much. Who's next?
Hamish Patterson, and then one more speaker.
Okay. Hamish, go ahead, please.
Good evening, City Council. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Yes, it's been, it's been a long time. This is exciting. And in the midst of tragedy, we build something beautiful for the youth. I, I'm, I'm, I hope we can do this. It has been a long, long time to get to this point. And something I might suggest is, is so many kids started out lobbying for the skate park over the, over the course of this and, and moved on and became adults. And I would hope that we, when the time is appropriate, I know your hands are busy now, is, is we make a plaque and we, we put up all the names of the kids that showed up at City Hall and, and, and made public comments and signed things and, and showed up. And we make a public record for all of those young people that were eight, nine, 12 years ago that showed up and are now adults and moved on. And a lot of people participated this, in this for a long time and, and it's been a, it's been a long journey. It really has. And this is exciting. I, I look forward to watching you guys vote to approve this. I, I was looking at the, the bid and I, I hope that the, the, the present skate park is put up for surplus and given to a disadvantaged community or moved to somewhere, somewhere in Malibu. For example, the ramps at Papa Jack's made a location up in the Malibu Hills where people skated and enjoyed them for a long time, if not still doing it. And that we have, we paid a lot of money for those and, and I think that they should go somewhere and not end up in a landfill. And I would also just, I was looking at the bid and I did have a question about 115,000 square feet of engineered wood fiber for a total cost of $180,000. And I don't know what we need 15,000 square feet of engineered fiber for at the skate park at $180,000. So maybe, that's the only thing I looked at at the bid that, that raised my eyebrows and the fact that we would spend $28,000 to destroy our $300,000 ramps when we could probably find either a disadvantaged community or, or, or move it somewhere else in Malibu. And I just appreciate everybody who's, who's got it. And I wanted to thank Pamela, who's there, who got me fired up back in the day to run for City Council. And Skylar, dude, I want to thank you for, for moving the ball forward when you did because it didn't get, it got pretty far. And Andy, you know, we, we ride hard on this one and everyone on the City Council, thank you very much. You've all been integral in this and I look forward to watching you approve this. Thank you.
Thank you. You say we have one more?
Yes. Ryan?
Ryan, go ahead, please.
Yes, are we on 7A or are we on naming rights? Because this item is on twice.
We're on 7A, Ryan.
Okay. For 7A, for the funding...
But it does include naming rights. The consent item was already approved.
Okay. So my point is this is a project that came in at over double cost and I'm not debating whether we need a skate park. I'd, I'd like a little more information as to why either there were not enough bidders or the $600,000 and change orders is kind of converting this design-build project because we can't have every project of the city doubling cost like this. So that's important. As to naming rights and so forth, my suggestion would be that you establish an endowment and you not put a name on the place. Or if you do, it's for only a certain duration of time so that you can renew that. And, you know, the Honda Center becomes the Kia Center, becomes Staples, becomes Crypto or something like that over time, and you get to reboot. The threshold for land donation, sometimes people want their name on things and sometimes they don't. So I think maybe there is a component of structuring a donation of land or land acquisition to the city in exchange for naming rights that may qualify for closed session. I'd like you to sign that for a little further investigation now so you'll have the answer on the, on the spot next time it comes up. You know, there was, what is known as the Streisand Effect for privacy issues is more of a legal term. But in the case in Malibu, it's kind of the opposite. The Streisand Effect was for a major donation that was given to a third party on the outskirts of the city, which caused a lot of problems. And the naming was rescinded, as far as I recall, but the donor wanted to have their name taken off of it because this became such a boondoggle and a neighborhood nuisance and litigation with the city and government agencies. So just keeping that in mind as far as names go on, putting names on things. But the city of Malibu is in competition for obtaining lands that are important and adjacent to the city, if not for annexation, for direct control, local control, and to prevent uses that are inappropriate and dangerous to the city, such as putting campsites on land abutting the city in the hills up in Ramirez Canyon, for instance, or at Bluffs Park or Charmlee Park. And, you know, to burn down the whole rest of Malibu would be really stupid, of course. So keeping in mind that we need to outsmart some of these other public agencies that are good at assigning write-off and donation value, which the city of Malibu can equally do if we had a campaign consultant or someone with that expertise. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Marion, you want to say something?
I was just wondering if we could ask Heather Gardner, I know she got here late, if she could come up and have her three minutes. She's been a stalwart supporter of this for decades.
Yeah, please do. And we moved this around and I don't want anyone to think that we did it to cut off comments. So please go forward and just introduce yourself.
So this is the time. I was just counting on my fingers and I actually needed more than two hands to count the amount of years I have been coming to city council meetings regarding this skate park. 11 years. And in 2011, the city, it's documented in the press, promised that after Papa Jack's was closed, they would within a year or two have a new skate park for our community. Sadly, many of the amazing, sorry, it was actually a really sweet time for all of us, but all of the amazing kids that were here, that came and put their time in are, you know, they're studying for their AP classes and/or they're in college right now. So, but let's get this done. We can't be distracted by any natural disasters or, there's a lot you guys have going on, on your plates right now. I'm sure you're overwhelmed with everything. I've been seeing some meetings and things that have been going on. But we, we have to be focused on just getting this done. The construction is an outside entity. The designers are the outside entity. We do not need to do anything but approve and let it happen and break ground finally. No naming rights? I don't think I'm kind of for that. And also, I do believe that Scott may have promised 72,000. There was some kind of discrepancy or something with that. So, and I also know that the Strange family had wanted to be a part of the new skate park. So I think that they had also had mentioned that they might want to be a part of helping to contribute to that. But let's get it done and let's vote tonight. And I really want to say I would love for this to be my last meeting regarding this topic. I'm sure I'll be back for other things, but I just want to release it. I'm going to give it to you guys. Thank you for being the council members that are finally going to get this done. So I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. There's no more speakers, I assume? We've got everybody? All right. Public comments are closed. Let's bring it up here to the dais. Anybody have any questions or comments?
I have a couple of questions. I just want to check, we have been leak seeing that parking on month to month. Is there any noticing that we need to give that tenant to make sure that they know they're vacating ASAP?
Yes. There is a 30-day notice that we must give.
Okay. And then the mention of the existing facility, what are the plans for that? Because I know we've been spending a lot of money keeping it together. It would be great if we could either donate it or keep it for some other special use.
Yeah. So as you know, where the temporary skate park is now, that will turn into parking for the permanent skate park. We hope to keep that open as long as possible while we're constructing the permanent skate park. Those pieces are made out of wood and we're only supposed to last a few years. So the upkeep of them was just year to year. And the wood is deteriorating pretty rapidly and it gets a lot of wear and tear. So we will do an evaluation of what is there, the equipment that's there, and see if there's anything salvageable and make a plan there forward. But it is, it is in pretty bad condition.
Okay. So I would just reach out, Hamish, maybe reach out to the Community Services Department. Maybe you guys can work together and see if there is anything that's able to be repurposed there. With that, I'm going to make a motion to approve this with regards to the naming rights. I hear what people say. I get it. I, I think it should be eligible for naming rights. I want to direct the staff to proceed with the outreach. I think maybe the overall name stays the Malibu Skate Park, but we have some underlying elements or objects within the skate park that maybe can be dedicated to certain people. I don't have a recommendation for any funding thresholds or anything else like that.
Is the motion the recommended action of the staff?
Yes.
I'll second that.
All right. Anybody else have any questions or comments? I'll, I'll make one comment about the naming rights. I do think having it be named the Malibu Skate Park is very appropriate. And any money we can raise by maybe having an element with a name on it, if we're going to have a local business or whatever, they might have a little piece of the names. But every dollar that we can, we pull up for this helps us fund another park somewhere else. So that's part of the idea, is to take advantage of this opportunity to raise money for other things, sports fields, programs and so forth. But the city is fortunate. We've got money in our reserves and there's probably no better place to use it than this. So with that, I have a motion in a second. I'd like to put it...
I just have one more comment. If we could make sure that when we do the groundbreaking, that we do have some type of celebration associated with that, I would greatly appreciate that. So we can hopefully get as many people there to, to witness the city actually moving forward with this.
I was going to just say, like, I don't know when we're voting, but we're going to vote. And a party would be great. I know a bunch of pro skaters, we can have them come out and do a demo day. We can make it a Malibu kind of pop-up. Also, get local involved and we can just celebrate this. I heard we need some scissors and a ribbon. This is very exciting, so I'm ready to vote.
Okay. All right. With that, let's put it to a roll call vote.
Mayor Protem Riggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Silverstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Conrad?
Yes.
Councilmember Yury?
Yes.
Mayor Stewart?
Absolutely, yes.
Motion carries.
All right. We're not supposed to clap, but that was worth it. All right. All right. Now, thanks, everybody. Let's get back to the order of business we normally have. It's time for public comments. We've got a stack of them. And let's get started. First up is Luca, followed by Dean Wiener. Winner. 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 I know, Dean.
Dean, if I were you, I quit coming to these meetings. Tell me, get it right. Get it.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. I just want to express a little bit of disappointment, personal and on behalf of many architects and professionals, if we're called, to, to intervene in this workshop that was very useful in concept, but didn't really result in, in, in what we were really expecting. What happened specifically for the bulk was that we had this conversation with the planning commission. The planning commission approved to strike the bulk out after having heard not only us, but also a lot of citizens. And then we had this workshop together where there were two tables, 20 people on one side, 20 people on the other one, 16 to four on this side, 17 to three on this other side, voted to, to strike it. And then ultimately, it was re-proposed at the last meeting and then it was, it was approved. I think the effort by staff was huge and was great. It was just not comprehensive and it was not, it was not total. It's done, it's done what it's done. What's done is done. But specifically, there's, there's imagery and, and graphics that were shown at the time that were not exactly representative of what was going to happen or what could happen. I understand that most of the attention was into trying to protect views from people who were living behind these new structures and so mainly affecting two-story buildings. But there's some considerations that just got lost in, in the process. One specifically is that, like, you know, Councilmember Bruce underlined many times, the actual language in the, in the governor's ordinance was to not... the actual language in the governor's ordinance was to not have bulk mentioned, but only area and height. It was said that we were going to add third dimension. Geometry is the oldest of science subjects in the world in history, and the three dimensions are X, Y, and Z. X, Y define the plane, and then Z, which is height, is the third dimension, in fact, and it defines the volume. This was kind of, I don't want to say misrepresented, but represented in a different way. Case in fact here is, again, if we have a two-story, 3,000 square feet building, the owner decides to develop a ranch-style 2,000 square feet on one story, then the majority of the building would be outside of this famous 10% bulk. And there's other instances, even when we switch from a flat to a pitched roof in a two-story situation. But I hope we will be able to get on to it for our next round, and before we have a next fire, we can maybe change and modify some of these details to make it more comprehensive.
Thank you. Dean, my esteemed associate here said Jenner, Winter. How's that?
Let me tell you, if I was heir to the Oscar Mayer throne, we'd be rocking and rolling on some reruns. All right, thank you for being able to speak.
Christopher Sorensen's up next.
So, relative to just general things, putting this thing in perspective, the way I see it, with the number of homes we have, if you rightly so include all the other wildfire victims from Woolsey up until current, we're looking at probably, what, 1,000 homes? You're talking about like an $8 to $10 billion project here, more with utilities than what's got to go on on PCH. This is a huge endeavor. I read something the other day, dealing with Horvath's office, that they're projecting like $9 billion of economic impact if it only takes us five years to rebuild. So if Malibu's only 5% of that, that's $450 million, that's $100 million a year. So there's plenty of money at stake. I think the city needs to take an approach where you add to staff, where we get a structure relative to what's being tabled with a czar and a group of community people, all right? I'm more than willing to head that up. Nobody here knows who I am, I'm nobody special, but I'm willing to step away from my job. I do engineering and construction for 35 years. I don't do residential. I've put up a refinery in 30 months. I think we can build some homes, and I want to help get that done, okay? And when we look at this, I get upset because a lot of great effort, a lot of good intent, a lot of talk, not a lot of results. And I'm sorry if you take that personal, but I want you to take it personal. There was a gentleman up here at the end of the city council meeting, there was only a handful of us here at the last meeting, and he stood up here and he said, "Don't take it personal." I object to what he said. We have to take it personal. There's nothing more personal going on than this right now. So please listen to us when we want that. I would love to have Abe Roy and some others in the community, if there were four or five of us that sat between Mr. Tony and city council, we'd get after this. And we'd do it fairly, with respect, and knowing how to do it. And we'd do it 24/7. This wouldn't be Monday to Friday, and occasionally here and there, and I don't mean any disrespect, because I know people have worked their ass off, but I work turnarounds, where we'll work 120 hours a week. We do it safely, we do quality. I do 1,000-degree, 3,000-pound piping systems. We could build a house. I'm not talking about my company doing it, I'm talking about managing it. So please take it under consideration. We need to move it forward before these workshops, we're losing time. That's why I was upset about the letter. We say that we're asking for things from the federal government and the state, and we're not, and it's so, because we're not being bureaucratic. We're the most bureaucratic city in this country relative to permitting. Let's take the opportunity to do something different, please. Thank you.
All right, Christopher Sorensen, followed by Michelle Shane.
Hello, Honorable Commissioners, Christopher Sorensen Architects, Sorensen Architects. Been out here for about 30 years now, working in Malibu, designing homes, and again, election and sustainability at UCLA. We're also licensed in New York, across the country, but most of the homes, I cut my teeth here in Malibu, I know the code extremely well. And as an architect, and kind of with architects, we work with engineering brains, I look at the plus or minus 700 homes that are, were destroyed, and I can't help but think of methodologies and efficiencies. And right now, the system that is currently in place is a system that's always been in place. We engineer, design, approve, and build one at a time, one at a time, one at a time. So I'm just going to read a little thing that I wrote. You're probably aware that we've formed this group called the Malibu Architects Association, Luca, myself, and a lot of the old, you know, Doug Burge, and a lot of the architects that have been here for decades. And so, let me just read this. Obviously, the environmental, the mission statement of the city of Malibu, it's one of the most well-renowned cities on planet Earth, it's in so many movies, et cetera, we all know. And again, we espouse to be leaders, environment, and so I think, you know, and we want to protect the environment. So let me just, this is kind of economies of scale I want to talk about when I look at all the destruction, that we all stare at that destruction. And, "The unfortunate gentrification that follows these fires as underinsured and less affluent residents struggle to rebuild. The good news is that significant economies of scale can be achieved by uniting efforts. A unified approach to design, engineering, approvals, and construction will streamline the process and reduce costs substantially. The inefficiencies in the current system are staggering. To produce 300 individual wave-up rush reports for the beach homes, to produce 700-plus geologic reports and surveys, amounting to almost $10 million in just for those three reports that take months to do, and separate approvals for each home are not practical. A systematic approach for areas like the beach homes and Big Rock will save time and resources. Prefabrication, fire-smart construction, and a new sewer system for these homes, for these at least 500 homes are also viable solutions that can further reduce costs. Rebuilding one home at a time is inefficient, will create logistical challenges on PCH. With Malibu's rebuilding efforts exceeding $1 billion, even achieving 10% efficiency will save over $100 million for the victims." I've already reached out to a lot of the staff with specific proposals of what can be done. Just politically, we need support from the council, and, you know, I think I've included a lot of staff, so they know my specific recommendations, but thank you for listening.
Thank you. So it's Michelle Shane, followed by Kirsten Thames.
I'm here on a personal matter, and I'm going to ask you to remove yourself from everything we're talking about. Emily's killer is in front of the whole commission of paroles on March 19th. And we can write, email, Zoom team, whatever the link is, or be there in person. It's in Sacramento. I will post tomorrow to all the different social media outlets, but I wanted to come to council today and make you aware of it, and anyone, you can reach out to me, I can give you the information directly. And it's our last hope. Ellen and I had come to terms with the fact that he was being released when the governor had sent it back to the commission. We had thought it was being rubber stamped. We were mistaken. It's not rubber stamped, it's moved from parole, individual parolees, to the overall commission, which will be 10 to 20 people, and there will be pro and against discussions, maximum of two minutes each. That's one minute less than here. And we are hoping that we can get one final round of support to do this. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. All right, Kirsten Thames, followed by Luis Tina.
Hi, thank you for having me. I just wanted to talk, I'm here as a voice for our seniors. I am a local concierge, home health nurse, and I've been trying to get like a task force set up during the Franklin fire, and I was here during the Woolsey fire as well, but I have so many patients, I can go on and on about stories, but I have so many patients that, right now, they're still in a state of like shock, trauma, and because there was nobody, they couldn't get out, they didn't even know how far the fire was from them, they didn't have any power, which, you know, they didn't charge their cell phones, they couldn't call 911. I had patients on the floor, eight hours, couldn't call 911, and she was freezing. I just happened to go check on my patients Tuesday morning before this passed, the Palisades Fire, and I had to drag a few people out by sheets. So when we talk about planning, planning, when they say go, go, we need something set for our seniors, because they are scared, they are alone when power goes out. Some of them have the Generac generators, but if you don't have gas, you don't have any, I mean, you have no power. I have some that are on air mattresses now, that were left laying on hard iron beds, and now have bed sores. I mean, something like 50% of Malibu is over the age of 60, I think, it's something like that, but, you know, and we're all going to get old, you know, God willing. So we need something set in place for our seniors, and I don't know the hierarchy of command here, who to go to, the mayor, the city manager, I don't know, but I really, I've been talking a lot with Halen, and she has been excellent in helping me. She's passionate about the seniors, as am I, and I just need help. We have a very big budget with the senior center, and I just want to try and set something up, and I don't want our seniors to be forgotten, because right now, I just asked three of them today, I said, "What are you most afraid of?" And what they said was, "Not having power and having somebody check on me." And politics aside, we're all human, we all know somebody that is elderly. Wouldn't you want somebody to check on them? Wouldn't you want your mom, or dad, or grandma, or grand... You want them to be checked on. So I need help, somebody help me put together some kind of a task force. And one more thing about the skate park, one of my good friends who just survived being burnt in the fire, just got out of the Grossman Burn Center, George Trafton, he just got word that he's abducted, 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 abducted into the skateboard Hall of Fame. So, and he's a Malibu local, inducted, inducted, sorry. So, just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you. All right. Next up is Luis Tina, followed by Joe Drummond, who has four minutes.
Hello, council. I want to start with thanking you for your efforts this last two months, especially last week, it was intense, four days, and thank you very much also for the staff, to the staff, sorry. I want to talk about three things and ask you for three favors, very little, or questions, favors, questions. I want to start with the FEMA elevation thing. So this is what I already explained the other week, okay. So this is what a house looks or looked before the fire, and as you see, it's a bit lower than what it should be. So what went through and it got approved, and it is what it is, is that we can raise it the same amount that FEMA requires us to do, probably without the plus 10% on top, if we're going beyond 28 feet. But when coastal denies this, I mean, if coastal denies this, or when coastal denies, we need to think about a Plan B. So, most likely, what's going to happen is this, right? We're going to be entitled just, so there's two types of heights, there's the absolute and the relative, right? So going back, the house, the relative height, in this case, was 30 feet, but the absolute height from PCH, in this case, was 20 feet. So this means that we can build 22 feet plus 10%, and if we want to go beyond that, we will have to go through a de minimis waiver, which is better than a CDP. But, another change that was introduced is that the de minimis waivers can be appealed directly to the coastal commission. So that's going to be kind of worse, yes, because they are in the coast, in the appeal zone. That's what I read, maybe I'm wrong, and I love it when people correct me. So, we need to think about this Plan B. And also, has any of you asked FEMA if we can have a waiver for the FEMA elevation thing? We have waivers for geologic hazards, we could maybe have a waiver for this. Just a question, and have the knowing writing. The next thing that I wanted to speak about is timelines, right, during the reviews. So, it's cool that we can get an approval within 15 days for an RDP, but the problem is to be deemed complete. So, how long, so question for Bruce is, can you help me with asking FEMA about the elevation? Now, question to Mary Ann, you, that you're an expert with the planning process, can you shed some light on how can we improve the process of being deemed complete, maybe providing a list of documents, and we cannot include anything else? And then a question maybe for Halen, or Steve, or Doug, is, can we follow up with Joe and see if we have budget for, I think it's Tyler Technologies is the one that has EpiCalA? I think that will help everything. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I ask Trevor a question?
Sure.
Because we need to understand this. My understanding, Trevor, is that what Luis just said about FEMA height, if it's a like-for-like rebuild from a Palisades fire, there is no coastal commission, they have nothing to do with that, there's no appeal because of de minimis waivers, and there's, unless it's different, it's not like-for-like, and the height issue is none of their business. We make that decision, and it's unappealable and unreviewable, and they can't, no one else can do anything about it.
For the Palisades Fire, that was the direction of the council, and I think it'll be memorialized in the policy document brought back. It's different for people that are not Palisades Fire, and that's where the confusion is. But for Palisades Fire, we are interpreting the governor's order to be the height of the structure, and if that moves up, it would not require the de minimis waiver or any treatment from the...
And coastal has no say in the matter, right?
That's correct.
And in fact, that's actually a huge incentive to do like-for-like, because if you don't do like-for-like, you're outside the governor's order, and you might not get the benefit of our height interpretation.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you, Bruce, I'm glad you brought that up. All right, Joe Drummond, and followed by Norm Haney.
Thank you for approving the skate park, and congratulations to Renika and Tyler. We need to give these people a raise, I guess, to keep them here. "Rapid rebuilding expedite and streamline, as well as avoid procedural delay in costs for such rebuilding efforts and remove the roadblocks." This is from the governor's order for like-for-like, plus or minus 10%. That is what like-for-like is defined as. "Yet for the rebuild codes you passed last week, you left a huge roadblock in there for most of the rebuilds on the land and beach homes regarding irrigation that is a new addition to the LCP that wasn't there before, and has nothing to do with wildfires, as well as the bulk being removed from the 10% restriction." Can we ask Trevor if these can be removed from the LCP before March 12th, when we're voting on it, or when it's going to be through? I don't know. As well, there's a new requirement for, of a pre-debris inspection for debris removals. There's 11 steps for the hazardous waste licenses debris removal contractors must follow, and they have to do 40 hours of preparation to learn what is required to complete these 11 steps in detail. So they are already well-versed in what is required. As long as there is no delays to our debris removal, then this is fine to have a pre-removal inspection, but it should really only be for one contractor, because it's the contractor who is removing, I think there's two or three contractors that are removing about 100 to 200 of the debris around in Big Rock and the beach and Rambla. So, if you keep doing an inspection per lot, it'll take forever, but if you do it per contractor, it'll be much less redundant, and not only a waste of the contractor's time, but the city staff's time. There's also a post-debris removal inspection, so that can address any specific erosion control measures not in place at that point, and it can be enforced at that point. And I agree with Dean, which I'll bring up at the workshop meeting item, that we need a rebuild manager to work with staff, like Abe Roy, to partner with Dean from the beach and other representatives, perhaps like Scott Dietrich from Rambla and Les Flores and La Costa, and the Architects Council. So regarding SCE, SCE is currently undergrounding in Big Rock, Les Flores, and Rambla, but they are not removing the dangerous fire-prone creosote poles, apparently because the telecom companies such as Frontier and Spectrum are not undergrounding at the same time. And why this wasn't planned simultaneously for all of our safety, I'm not sure. How can we get this done while the trenches... the trenches are open and available for telecom companies to easily access? And I also hope the city is going to buy or rent a goat herd this year to maintain the fire breaks where the Franklin fire burn scars above Bruce and Steve's homes on Malibu Canyon Road and also above Big Rock, Rambla and Les Flores Drive. I do hope that a prescribed burn or some sort of larger fire break method can be enacted by Captain Drew Smith and Cal Fire to take care of western Malibu so that these disasters can be stopped in their tracks like the Franklin fire created. Not to ruin the entire mountainside, but just to keep a fire break of 500 to 1,000 feet away from the homes below. This is the symbiotic relationship we have to enact for living in the most beautiful place on earth. And we must respect the environment, but we also must have it respect our communities also by protecting our neighborhoods. So our families and seniors are not put in the position of losing our homes ever again. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Norm Haney is up next, followed by Abe Roy.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you once again. I, I want to express my appreciation for the people that do work for the staff, Yolanda, Tyler Eaton, Renika, and the city council. You folks met at just an incredible schedule, and you're continuing to do that to support the people in Malibu, primarily those who lost their homes. And it is appreciated. I, people talk about the private sector can work faster. Well, of course they can. They've always been able to work faster, but they haven't always been able to do it correctly. And to do it correctly requires leadership from the city. And this city has provided that leadership over the past two and a half months, and it is appreciated. I'm going to talk about one other subject. We all know that there's not any water in the fire hydrants when we have a wildfire. And we should move forward to do something about that in the future. What can we do? We can encourage people to have their own water supply, a 20,000 gallon water tank. If you have a 15 foot diameter tank and you put five feet of it in the ground, it only extends up another seven or eight feet above that. That can be, that can save your house. Where our reliance upon the county to provide the water is not ever going to save your house because there isn't any water. We need to move forward and approve houses that have their own water supply. We need to encourage the fire department to approve it. They're in lockstep with the county. And the county's primary goal is to get people to build their infrastructure for them and to maintain their, their, their infrastructure. And if, if they can't get the money, they don't do it. Now, I've signed up for a check valve. I'm going to do it. I've signed on it. That's not what this is about. That's a commitment that I made and I will do it. But there will be other things in the future where people are held up because the county is relying upon other people to come in and fix their infrastructure for them. I'd like to see houses approved if they're willing to build their own water supply. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Abe Roy is up next, followed by Arnold Koch, Coke, pardon.
Thank you, the slides. I'll make this quick. Promised council member Steve and I were not speaking before this, but we just registered this domain, malibu fire rebuilds.org. It is going to be a 100% resident-driven crowdsourced, by crowd, I mean, people that are going to be rebuilding their homes from the fire. They will input their data and we will create visibility for everybody relative to where we are. The idea is to have a clear understanding, transparency of where things are getting stuck, where things need to be moving. And this is fudge data, but this is sort of an idea of a dashboard that this data will produce. We can look at all different areas, including not just the areas of the city, but also areas of the residents. If things are being turned back around, how quickly are they turned back around? Where do we have the bottlenecks and so on and so forth? So in practicality, how is this expected to work? So let's just say Jimmy and his architect turn in their plan next week. They'll go into this very simple form, very simple user interface, enter what date, if it's entered, the clock starts to go and we'll have clear visibility into where things are for every step of the process. So hopefully this will clue us into where we need to focus on. We don't have to waste post facto. We'll have an earlier detection of any issues, any recurring themes that are coming. I want to be clear, this is not a social media site where people are going and throwing opinions and sort of name-calling and things like that. This is going to be a very facts-oriented site where we can actually look at the, the data real time, driven by the people who are submitting their plans, create the transparency we need. And hopefully it'll be an opportunity to anticipate and triage the issues. So more to come. We haven't built out this infrastructure, but there's plenty of, you know, tech resources within our community as well as plugins available with buildable platforms like WordPress where this can be done fairly, fairly easily. So that's all I want to share. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Arnold Koch, and followed by Kevin Keegan.
Good evening. It's Arnold Koch.
I have a friend, it's Coke to him, so.
Third time I thought I mentioned it today. I love the website idea. And it brings to mind that we are spending a lot of time thinking about possible improvements. And we're spending a lot of time that we should be spending on our, in our jobs with our family. And it feels a little bit like we're doing your job sometimes. And I was very excited when I heard Steve mention essentially what Abe just mentioned. I think it's a fantastic idea to create, to create transparency and to hold the city accountable and to measure something because what we measure expands. And needed changes will be found fast and can possibly be expedited. I'm also sensing that the city is losing a bit of trust because we can't live in the fear that moving along the process, something may be introduced as we move along, like pre-debris inspections. Suddenly they're there, nobody had told us about it. And those things delay, delay the process. So if something comes up and it hasn't been shared, just eat it. Look if there are other parties that, that don't need it, like for example, LA County, does LA County have it? And if LA County doesn't have it, it's maybe not that safety relevant. We can't introduce hoops and, and, and issues under the smokescreen of, of safety. Safety is important, but speed is important too. And another topic are self-containment features, and that means expediting pools as well, or whatever those, those self-containment features can look like. Again, people can put on-ground pools in their backyard out of fear because they want to brace their homes for the next fire that will come, for the next fire that will come. It's not a question of if, it will be there and people will be there protecting their homes and more people will be there protecting their homes because we learned that the fire department will not be there. So I would hope that pools can be understood as that, as self-containment features and be expedited in the permitting process. Part of that is we will have half-constructed houses there during the next Santa Ana winds. And we need to prepare for that as well because there will be a lot of exposed wood. And $100 million in the treasure chest, we need to decide what we're going to use it for and what we're waiting for.
Thank you.
It needs to be used.
All right. Kevin Keegan is up next, followed by Scott Dietrich.
I have a few questions for the council. First, in my opinion, the Pacific Ocean is part of our local economic engine. As our surfer community knows, we cannot ignore our ocean. So question number one is, can you ask a responsible agency to formally brief the public on the status of ocean water health and safety at an upcoming city council regular meeting? Second, Malibu resident Brian Fogel made a public comment in February suggesting we launch a PCH access app to replace the paper-based system being used today. This type of app could save a lot of time and money for the community. Inspired by Brian, Michelle Shane and I have outlined a software development proposal. Before we go too far, question number two, is the city or council or counties, excuse me, pursuing Brian Fogel's PCH access app idea? Third, in my judgment, applying AI solutions to Malibu rebuild processes has the potential to reduce costs and streamline services. About a month ago, OpenAI released ChatGPT GOV for government agencies, which offers internal safety protocols for the public sector. Walking the talk, last week, our Malibu schools AI study committee shared new AI lesson plans with our Malibu high school and Malibu middle school teachers for them to, to safety test out age-appropriate and subject-focused AI apps and tools in their classes before the end of the school year. My third question is, is the city of Malibu beginning to adopt government-appropriate AI tools? Lastly, the Guidepost Solutions School Safety Report that the city of Malibu funded in 2022 and 2023 recommended a school resource officer or SRO for Malibu schools. Two years later, Malibu Public Schools do not have an SRO. But in contrast, Santa Monica High School has two SROs. Last year, the school site councils for Malibu Elementary School and Webster Elementary School voted to support hiring an SRO and published letters underscoring their support for Malibu Public Schools unfortunately still do not have an SRO. Knowing all of that, last month, I attended our school district's Board of Education meeting and asked the school board directly to either reassign one of the two existing Santa Monica High School SROs to Malibu High School, or to schedule a vote to approve funding a third school district-supported roaming SRO to serve Malibu Public Schools. To date, I have not received a response. My final question tonight is, can the city of Malibu extend a formal ask to the school board reinforcing my request for an SRO? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Scott Dietrich is up next, followed by Chris Goldblatt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. We in Rambla Pacifico have been working with Southern California Edison to underground our utilities. They wanted to go across our private road. We came up with a better solution. We met with a team of SCE engineers. We thought everything was great until last week. And then, as Joe said, we find out that the dumb telecom companies aren't participating in this. They're blaming SCE for not notifying them. SCE says they're begging the telecoms to come on board. Now, I spoke to Mayor Stewart on the subject on Friday, but we need your guys' help. We need to stop the telecoms from continuing on the polls that they want to do. It's absolutely insane. This is our one opportunity to get this done. So please, I don't know what it's going to take. I think probably getting Lindsey Horvath involved. And just if the telecoms won't do this, we're all going to switch to Starlink. And, you know, and if some polls fall down, that'd be a shame. What I'd wanted to speak tonight on was the workshop that we had. I left early because I went to the public safety meeting and they're going to propose goats and controlled burns and everything to reduce the fuel, which we've needed forever. Okay, the workshops were great, except they were very focused on changing the language in the LCP and the Malibu municipal code. We need a workshop just dealing fire rebuilds. We've got really smart people. We've got the architects, the engineers, the developers that know way more than I do. And the staff needs to hear from them. This isn't criticizing the staff at all. This is saying, let's get everybody together, get these fantastic ideas that will move us forward. We've got, as somebody said, nearly 1,000 homes to rebuild, and we're never going to be able to do it fast enough with the current procedures. So we need to do something, and the best way is to make use of the resources this city has. Get staff, get council, just like we did workshops, throw out ideas, reject some. And the staff can do a very, very simple staff report at the beginning, just listing categories of things we're going to talk about. That might solve, be the beginning of the solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Chris Goldblatt, and then Jeff Wagner.
Council members, Mayor, Mayor Protem, it's an honor to be here. As a native son of, son of Malibu, California, it's, it's my pleasure to come and speak about the Fish Reef Project and the sea cave. We could go ahead and play the short presentation there if you like. The, the toxic runoff really impacted the ocean's ability to.
15 years ago to help ocean life thrive. After the devastating Palisades fire, toxic runoff abounds on the bed of the already beleaguered Santa Monica Bay seafloor.
I'll say the same thing as we go. So this is one of our projects. This is in Baja, Mexico, where we have 1,000 sea caves on the seafloor, which is our, our patented technology. This is Galita, California, the only permitted biogenic sea cave reef in California. And we fill a gap because the state doesn't have a reefing program. We chose Galita because historically it had a large kelp forest. This is a sonar imaging of the reef on the seafloor. And if you place these just right and you get a heavy enough kelp forest, you can deflect the longshore current and retain just a little bit more sand on the beach during good kelp years. It's obviously good for the lobster population, it's good for the fish population, and we can and rebuild the, the kelp forest. So we're basically just here to, you know, to basically just share the information. We're not necessarily asking the council for anything. This is what it looks like after seven months, you get kelp all the way to the sea surface, the calico bass, the sand bass, they, they love it. So in this time of, you know, very difficult recovery period, I think it's very nice to be able to talk about projects where we can very quickly recover our kelp forests. We can do it in a guaranteed fashion. We can do it very, very quickly. It took us a decade to get the permits from the 11 state and federal agencies in Galita, but we're able to do it something more along the lines of six months at this point because we have created the pathway to that end. And there may, may be certain waivers that we can get at this point, and certainly support letters from the city council would certainly help to that end. So the, the plan as of right now would be to make the first two five-acre reef blocks in about 30 feet of water, one just below Dukes and the other directly off the Palisades. That, that would be the first two five-acre blocks that, that we, that our surveys have indicated would be the ideal spots for it. So I don't know if, if there's, if there's any questions I can answer, if you'd like me to just keep talking about it.
You got another 27 seconds.
Another 27 seconds. Okay. Let's put sea caves on the seafloor and rebuild our kelp forest and, and leave something for the future. Thank you very much.
Before you go, can you, can you give me your email address? I'm on the Santa Monica Bay Restoration Commission.
There you go.
You're doing a lot of the same stuff that we're trying to do there.
Yeah.
So if you can give me some information of, if we can get in contact with you, I'll see what I can do to maybe make a connection.
Thank you very much.
I'd also like your card, please.
Thank you. I'll, I'll leave it over there. Making a clean elevated surface that's stable for hundreds of years, that's what it's all about. So the plankton has a place to settle and grow out of the muck. That's really what it's all about.
All right. Thank you. All right, Jefferson Wagner, then it's Craig Hill for four minutes.
Thank you very much, council members, for your time and effort on behalf of your community. Couple of quick comments. We've been talking about offshore reefs for decades. In fact, Craig and I. In fact, Craig and I somewhat created a company called Reefer Retreat, similar to what was just described. What a terrific idea, something to look forward to. Quickly, we had a healthcare provider over to our right, I forgot your name, mentioning a lot about the senior citizens that are having impacts from lack of being able to get through roadblocks, Checkpoint Charlie or the one at Chautauqua. Meals on Wheels can't even get through. Those are essential providers for a lot of our seniors. Meals on Wheels, pretty innocent. But I see passes for contractors that actually say on them, essential contractors. And they're working at Nobu and Soho. I'm not knocking those businesses. They're wonderful businesses, they're good for income. But when I see those kinds of passes on the dashboards of their cars, and I can't get Meals on Wheels in through here for our seniors, there's a big disappointment in my mind, and you're going to hear more expressions about that in the future. Adding to another comment earlier, it was $72,000 that was promised to the city upon building the permanent skate park by Scott Gillen. It's on tape. He was wearing his white shirt with Yale on it. And I'll get you a copy of that tape where he made that promise. It's only 72K, but that's what he promised because he took so much of the way of property when he put his wall up. Rebuilds are, you've heard a number of comments from people about a rebuild czar. Heck, if you're going to do something like that, I'll throw my hat into it. It should be something that you could review. People could turn in something to say what their qualifications are, and then you make a decision yourself. That's up to you. But you need somebody in between you, doing the real work, right up there, the five of you, and administrating for the rest of these people. It's not that tough. The last one is on commercial conversions. On February 24th, I presented this to you in writing, as well as on, for people on Zoom. Thank you, Parker, for doing such a terrific job on that presentation. Commercial conversions is your easiest way to get low-income or medium-income housing back into the tax base of the city. You have eight or nine commercial buildings on PCH that are vacant, vacant, empty. They could use that conversion ZTA, and you could get back revenue as far as property taxes on those buildings and provide low-income and medium-income housing for people that are building their new homes as they wait the five to six years it's going to take, as it did in the Woolsey. Thank you very much for your time, council. Good evening.
All right, thank you. Craig Hill for four minutes, then Pamela Conley Olick.
Hi, good evening, council. I thought the PCH access app was my idea, but anyway, that reef stuff we just heard about, it has virtues you didn't even hear about. And I've never even heard from that company, but just based on research we've done. I've got a handful of things to present here. Let me just start by first saying, after five and a half years of service on the commission, I thought I'd retired in December to explore a few other opportunities. Because the Franklin Fire closed City Hall, I didn't get to have my last meeting. And then we had the Palisades Fire, and which we lost our home of 55 years. And after a while, it became apparent that I should come back and help with the rebuilding ordinance. The commission finally met in February. Now that we've cleared that initial hurdle, my priority is, again, to step back and explore other opportunities, albeit they are now very different opportunities based on what has happened in the meantime. So looking back for a moment, from what I've hear, I've made some positive contributions to the community over the years. The most recent may have been lobbying you, council, to open the rebuilding ordinance process to more public participation through the interactive workshops, which looks like it's been a good move. Unfortunately and ironically, this whole last week, I was dealing with FEMA and the SBA and getting things documented, so I wasn't able to participate. But I will going forward. And so thank you, council and staff, for appreciating that the community can play a direct, helpful role in our governance. Okay, so just a few random things that might be slipping through the cracks. First, on the Phase Two clearances, we had some experience already with the Army Corps that is not at all what's as advertised. If anybody wants to talk more about that, I'd be happy to let them know what's going on, what our experience was. Meanwhile, a lot of people are spending long days at sites up in the hills, owners, contractors, utility workers. Where are they going to the bathroom? We need maybe some honey wagons at the bottom of the hills till we have more structures put in place. The city could afford that. Meanwhile, driving into the city via Malibu Canyon, you see tens of thousands of orange plastic trash bags by the side of the road. Plastic is illegal in this city. You say, well, it's an emergency, but when do you use sandbags when it's not an emergency? These should be the right things. I don't know what we do about it at this point. We hear a lot about how we're looking for planners. I just happened to look on the HR website, there's no mention there of planners or looking for planners. So I'm not sure how do we square that. And then, let's see, Big Rock residents, oh, sorry. Why has the lot at Malibu Canyon and PCH been so thoroughly graded? Maybe I missed that one, but it's all ESHA nominally. Grading ESHA is illegal. And just because a fire came through, it doesn't take it out of ESHA status. Fire is part of the normal ecology. And so the question is, you know, to do that, to take it out of that permit status, you need that permitted, to take it out of the ESHA status, you need a permit, which involves some kind of in lieu payment or a land swap or some kind of equity situation there. I don't know that that's happened. So let's hear about that. And then Big Rock residents on the SCE stuff, we have a Zoom meeting among us, just residents, tomorrow at noon. Talk to Terri Davis, she can get you hooked up on that. And I think that's all I wanted to touch on, so thank you very much again, and I'll see you all on Wednesday. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Emily, you're up next, followed by Kimberly Carr for seven minutes.
I think I have an extra minute. Kathy Timms, who's Kristen's mom, would like to give me a minute. Is that okay with the city council? She's sitting right here.
It wasn't submitted. You've got seven minutes. Can you do it?
Excuse me, I have three minutes.
You've got seven.
No, that's next person.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's Kim. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Wrong one.
Is that okay?
Yeah. If you want to go four minutes, we'll do four minutes. Go ahead.
So I wanted to start the minute that I was given, and I would like to have a minute of silence in honor of Betty Omira, our 94-year-old resident who passed away during this last fire in her home in Big Rock. So let's begin that moment of silence. So in honor of Betty, I think what Kim, or I was talking about too, is we need a Betty's Buddies program. So the next fire, when a 94-year-old neighbor has to evacuate, maybe we can have volunteers instead of the sheriff knocking, saying, you need to leave. Betty, let's just go down to a safe place on PCH, and maybe we'll call your daughter Frances. Frances, who lives in Marina Del Rey, her daughter, couldn't get through the roadblocks to get to Betty. This can never happen again. Let's talk about management now. That's why I'm really here. Tonight, I'm glad to know what happened to our city manager. I guess since Thanksgiving, he's been on vacation and he's been paid. And tonight, now you guys are giving him an additional $184,000. It's, it just blows my mind what has happened to this city. We had another city manager, another buyout. Now this city manager, two disasters, the Franklin Fire, and now the Palisades, should be Palisades, Malibu Fire. Nobody's helping us, guys. We're on our own, just like the Yo-Yo Fire. With all due respect to Joe, I was there when nobody was there at the EOC, except for Haley. And Mary Ann and Doug, you were there too. You came and went, and I thank you for your service. But I really felt like nobody was there giving the City of Malibu a seat at the table. PCH, Caltrans, the governor's office, LA County, we do not have a seat at the table. Doug, you are doing a great job as our mayor, but this is with staff to staff, the emergency operations service, et cetera. We need somebody who's been, we're paying to not be at home, but to be working for the city, to make PCH open, to make PCH safe, to help new programs. Great ideas, all of you guys, about the czar, glad you threw your hat in. But guess what? Nobody's going to be implementing it. You've got to hire an interim city manager who's a professional, who has integrity, who has a resume, who has education, who's respected. This is not a game. Lives are at risk. People have died. It's time up. I'm sorry I have to be upset about this, but it's time. On 4-2, we are organizing a community brigade, for Point Doom Community Brigade. I would invite everyone to come because guess what? Nobody's going to save us next time either, guys. You have got to get organized. The next disaster could be an earthquake. It's just around the corner. So thank you for your time and service, and I pray Malibu will be okay.
Thank you. Okay, Kimberly Carr, you're the one with the seven minutes.
Seven would be great. If I do it in less, that's great, too. So, Honorable Mayor, City Council, staff, residents, thank you all for your support as I've tried to put this together. What I feel my role is here is to bring some light and levity to a very difficult situation. And what I'm going to do is share with you what I'm offering, at what cost, the current situational status as I know it, and giving a framework for discussion, what's possible today, 90 days from now, Memorial Day weekend, and 36 months with the Olympics. Next slide. And thank you, Parker, for accepting this afternoon. So this is a framework, and a framework is very important to help you settle your energy and rest and focus. I wish to offer my hands, my brain, my experience, to give you a receptacle for everything that is mobility for the City of Malibu and for the Chamber of Commerce. The content is up to you. You ask for human resources, which are needed more than capital, solutions. I hope this helps. I will be available on Thursdays to do updates as requested, and I can do this until 8:11, and then I need to pivot, and I can forward a URL to the Chamber of Commerce or to the city. Do it sooner if you'd like. Next, please. So I have a video. I've seen this problem before. I saw this 10 years ago. I've been volunteering in these firestorms for 10 years. You want to see a cute video with goats? I was at the animal shelter, dealing with a situation where we had animals, 3,600 animals, across eight counties. The county did not have picture functionality, which is the primary means of identification. So my neighbors put together the website, they had the technical skills. I was the feet on the ground, going to the veterinarians and et cetera, et cetera. So the video tells about that. And it's at forward slash hello, thejourneyhomeagain.com forward slash hello. I'm doing this because I am a fire survivor, too. I lost my own home to a fire and almost died. I could not walk, sit, make my own food, drive. I was pretty much a worm. So I've had tragedy more than once. And I was handicapped at that time because of a drunk driver. It is why I take the PCH seriously as well. So the lessons from survivors must not be lost in the recovery struggle, which is very easy to have happen. And I'm of the opinion that the wisdom that I've acquired could save individuals and their community millions of dollars. I have two projects to do that in a future date. Next slide, please. So I have three wishes, and again, bringing levity, I wanted to make this really cute video, but I didn't have the ability. I will share those wishes at the end. And I choose to, I chose to act now, rather than wait for a consensus because of the cost to the individuals in getting their businesses flowing and getting the services they need to their homes. So if I stumble, I ask please for forgiveness and to teach me when I do stumble so that we can improve together. Next, please. So situational status, the current road information and the sources, there is confusion around this issue. So for everything that is PCH, that's coming from Caltrans. For everything that's not PCH, that's coming from LAPD. So when you're seeing conflicting sources or don't understand it, that's part of the reason for that. I would like to see some visibility, a forecast on the status for these roads, because we have businesses that are needing to plan for staff and inventory, and to know what the basis for these decisions are so that they can make better decisions. It would help them a lot. So, let's see, next, pass protocol. So it was mentioned earlier, we need a better description with regards to these visitor passes. What are the definitions? And can we put that on a landing page? And in fact, at the road checkpoints, I have heard of a 30 to 90-minute commute from Santa Monica, especially in the morning. And what they're seeing is that people are getting turned away at the checkpoint. Well, why isn't there a sign much further back from the checkpoint that either A tells them, oh, you don't have a pass, go this way? Or direct them to a QR code or a website like this that shows them, here's your mobility options for parking, the bus, et cetera. Okay, so then, let me see, road checkpoints. Okay, we're on to the next one. How am I doing on time? Because I don't see the timer.
It's right there in front of you.
Oh, okay. All right, so framework today. Bus 134 schedule is the same. We don't know if modifications are needed, links to tracking and planning. I am in contact with the CEO's office, as you know, to get the latest information and work through some policies that are possibly needed. Parking in Santa Monica on the website, there's a map and information about hours and costs. Malibu, park at the library for now. Hopefully, we can get more parking. Car rental, it's a challenge, we need to change ordinances. We do have a gracious offer on private property to put in 12 spaces for rental cars to accommodate that need. Next, please. Okay, so we need to plan for a lot of parking this summer away from the pier, probably, and arrange for some way for them to be able to transit back and forth easily if it's not the bus. Vanpool, if you build it, they will come. Let's look at some options. There's other cities that do it really well. It's like, let's look at how they did it. Let's get a workshop or a committee together to do it. On the ferry and the water taxi, RFP alert. I don't know if you all know about it, but the contract is up for renewal. It's like about a 20-year contract, last time at $12,000. The RFP is not available yet. This is a great opportunity for the city. Restart the workshops for the PCH. We need to look at when that's going to happen and how long. April? And do we add two more workshops that allow for mobility issues? Next, please. Where we're talking about accommodating for the Olympics in 36 months. We need to get some skin in the game. There was a lot of outside input, but the locals were not participating. They're getting recommendations for bus shelters when the unintended use could be something else. People really need to take a look at what's being proposed before it happens and put their voice into this. And I also suggest that when you bring it to the table, not only is it mobility-focused, but that you've also got it segmented by areas of the PCH so that when people come to the table, they can talk about it by neighborhood rather than tech.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, three wishes?
Your time is up.
10 seconds?
Your time is up. Thank you.
Okay, thejourneyhomeagain.com.
All right, we have anybody on Zoom?
Four speakers. First is Howard Rotsky.
Okay, Howard, go ahead, please.
Sorry, it's 4:30 in the morning where I am, so I'm going to go quick. First, thank you to Tyler and Renika, and everything Yolanda and the staff is doing, and, you know, you guys. It's not an easy thing, so thank you. Michelle Shane, you know, we're serious about PCH and stopping speeding and things like that. I would suggest we use our lobbyists and make them earn their money and get some favor with whatever agency is going to release this person and make sure it doesn't happen. So it's known that we put some teeth... So, it's known that we put some teeth into what we say. The, the next thing is, we're going to have to form a citizens group with staff with some guidelines. Something like the LAPD has, you know, a private, I don't know what they call it. And they advise the LAPD and vice versa, and it's worked for years. But we really need to just figure it out and how, you know, it will work. And then, Will Dan. I'm just going to use that name because that's somebody I'm very familiar with. They have a very different objective financially than the city does or the citizen does in getting their plans back. So, I would strongly suggest there's strong guidelines ahead of time. Will Dan gets one bite at the apple. They give you every correction that you need. A competent architect can deal with that. You come back a second time, you go over your corrections with them or whomever the city deems you do it with. That person has the authority to red bubble or bubble the things that aren't done 100% correctly. And your architect makes a correction right there, and you leave. Because if you give them three bites of the apple, they will take three bites of the apple because that's how they make their money. And take it from somebody that's actually been down to Will Dan. It's not great. The next thing is this letter to the governor. Letters don't work. We need our lobbyists, anybody that knows the governor, Lindsay, Ben, Jen, Sherman. We need a full court press for those guys. Letters, it's just, I don't want to say it's a fruitless effort, but getting our lobbyists and our officials to help is, in my opinion, the only thing that's going to work. So, that's all I got. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Howard. Who's next?
Wade Major.
Wade, go ahead, please.
Hi, everybody. Scott and Joe already touched on this, but the, and Mayor Stewart has done a great job illuminating the situation. This playground spat that's going on between Frontier and Spectrum on the one end and SCE on the other is just absolutely unsustainable. We need everything undergrounded. There's a CPUC meeting on Thursday at 11 o'clock. I think it would be great if the city could weigh in there and let them know because they're the playground monitor here. Somebody has to call all these parties together. There's absolutely no point in Edison undergrounding lines if we're going to have half poles or full poles holding telecom lines after that. It's insane. Everyone who has lines above ground, everyone who is renting lines or renting space on Edison's lines, they all need to go underground. The telephone poles have to go away. No question, all of them have to go away. So, whatever the city can do to weigh in on that this Thursday would be great. Get the CPUC to tell them to all calm down and get together and do the right thing. Thanks.
Is that it, Wade? Are you still there? Yeah, okay. All right, let's move. I think we lost Wade, or he was up. Right? He's done? Okay. Who's next?
Andy Lyon.
Andy, go ahead, please.
Yeah, hi. Just want to touch on something that the sheriff during his report talked about some guy that ripped off somebody in West Malibu and had priors, and they got him on, you know, DNA or whatever. It should be nice to know, since he doesn't have any prior address, or he could be just floating around Malibu. It'd be nice to know what he looked like, if they could put up a picture of the guy so that, you know, somebody could see or saw him. They could turn him in. He could be hanging out anywhere around town just for like, any kind of criminal activity. It'd be nice. I posted up something about some guy that's back in town that was busted for indecent exposure, and he's been cruising around, and people seem to appreciate that. So, maybe we could get the sheriff to make that available so we know what's going on. This PCH thing with these passes and everything, everybody that, you know, these contractors, it seemed like a lot, anybody could do it. I don't know why we don't have, everybody that lives in Malibu should be able to drive through or something and just not stop. Like, why don't we, why don't we have it so that it's just like, no stopping, no gawking, no nothing? It's just straight through, you know? Maybe have it, you know, closed off at night. There's only a couple of streets going up into like, you know, Big Rock, La Flores, Tuna. You know, you just, the rest of it, you know, block it off, but just straight through, you know? No stopping. Sort of silly. Otherwise, make it so that there's, you know, a parking ride instead of people don't want to take the bus, you know, be able to park down at City Hall or, you know, down in center of town and have a car in there and keep one in town. We used to do that when I was in high school, and they had the highway closed for months at a time. But something has to be done with that. It's just, it's ridiculous. It's just going to go on and on and on. And I don't know why, why, why that's the way it is right now. It just seems, you know, no stopping, just go. I wanted to say something about, Craig touched on that lot, Weintraub's Lot. You know, I brought that up when it first, when it first happened. It seemed like they spent like 500 grand on grading that lot because it was an emergency. And, you know, half of it hasn't even been used. But what he did get was the driveway that he needed for his project to go through that heads off that lot down into Winter Canyon Road. And that was necessary for his hotel project, and that was done. It was like he just handed over his planning or his grading plan to whoever it was and got it done. And I know Doug said that it was going to get put back to the way it was, but it looks like they're already slowing down up there, too. And I really want to see that goes back to where, the way it was. And he doesn't get a benefit out of this whole, you know, tragedy. He seemed to be the first vulture that jumped in and benefited from this disaster in Malibu. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, who's next?
Ryan.
Ryan, go ahead, please.
Yes, I wanted to reiterate that your number-one priority is to get a funding agreement from the federal government, from FEMA and the state on the reimbursables for this series of fire disasters. Anything that they're not going to fund, we need to know what that is and maybe lobby to get that changed. We need to know the percentage of funding because we are short human resources. We were already short human resources, and there's no way we're going to deal with everything that needs to happen unless you hire another 10 or 15 people by contract. And you need the funding to do it. So, go back to number one. If FEMA will allow it, you can hire the professionals, the degreed engineering professionals necessary. And the number-one professional you need to hire is a utility undergrounding expert. Somebody who's an engineer who does this for subdivisions, master plans for the Irvine Company, or something where they can use their expertise. It'll become self-explanatory to achieve what is the best solution for undergrounding utilities, all of them. The electric, whether we replace the water main that's ready to blow any minute under PCH with a new flexible 40-inch water main so we'll have water for Western Malibu during the next big fire. You have to have a grants writer, and they need to start working tomorrow on every eligible grant for transportation, for clean water. What's going on with the streets sweeping on PCH? I don't think it's happening. We have a $460,000 safety grant for education for PCH. Well, that's totally changed conditions. We need to convert that grant into a different type of eligible use. I would suggest that PCH is not going to be four lanes in the near future. You do have approval to construct your camera system across PCH, and the right-of-way, I guess, is cleared at this point. The big arch in Eastern Malibu that says, "Welcome to Malibu and be beautiful," will have the cameras on it to catch speeding drivers or read their license plates and so forth. It can also hold transponders, receivers, for Malibu residents who receive a city-issue transponder funded by our gas tax money, our Measure R money, our transportation, whether it's Measure A or C money that we have to trade to free it up, or if it's general fund money because everybody keeps saying we have a lot of money. So, the Malibu residents who do not have a commuting choice to drive through other cities to get to where they need to go, they need to drive through their own city to get to where they need to go. And our voters voted for an extra half a cent sales tax, and we need to see our money work for us and a way to get to Santa Monica and back every day without waiting through a big line. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else?
Those are all the raised hands.
All right. No other speaker slips? We're all done?
No further speaker slips.
All right. So, we'll close public comments, bring it up to the dais for our comments up here. Who wants to go first?
I'll go first. I would like to try an experiment. Can you tie me from this way? And I can watch my clock? Thank you. I think I'm going to go over three minutes, but I'll try to keep it. Thank you, everybody. It's been two long months since the fire. 740 homes destroyed, more damaged, and thousands of Malibuites and our friends and neighbors scattered wherever they can find shelter. Yet, a quick search online shows that hundreds of short-term rentals are still available, mostly Airbnbs without hosts. These are the same weekend party rentals that have disrupted many of our neighborhoods. We can make housing available immediately by banning unhosted, short-term rentals. Many of these homes are available. These homes should be available to Malibu now. Landlords should welcome the chance to have these rentals occupied full-time, even if it's not by the deep-pocketed weekend crowd. I doubt we'll see the same opposition at Coastal Commission meetings this time. In fact, I would hope that the commission would support and approve this amendment. I'd like, I'd like to look into that, if we can reopen that, because I know that council has looked into that in the past. Times have changed now. I'd also like council support for a senior task force, which I've been working on. And I don't know if this is the right time for that, but I'm going to put it out there. I would like to learn more about the ZTA commercial conversions that Jay mentioned. I would like to have a photo of the criminal so I can post it and I can see what we're doing. So, who do I talk to? Is that Sodan? He's gone. But is that something that you guys provide?
We can reach out to the sheriff's office. I don't know if that's something they can provide or not, but happy to reach out.
That would be great. I would like to make sure that the underground, once they underground the utility is halfway, that the city is lobbying, in fact, for the rest of utilities. How do we make sure that this happens? I heard that there's a call on tomorrow at noon and also another one on Thursday, which I'd like to be on. Is that through the city?
I'm sorry, Councilmember Conrad, you said on, what were you referring to?
SE is having calls with residents, I believe. And I wasn't sure if there's city representation on those calls about their undergrounding.
If I can shed some light, what I believe the public speaker Wade was referring to is there is a California Public Utilities Commission meeting this Thursday. And so, the request was for the city to participate in that. To answer your question, council member, if the council would like to weigh in or take a position as to advocating for various companies to be a part of that underground, which I would ask Mayor Stewart. I believe you've had some conversations as well, so. But it would take a consensus of the council to do so, to take a position, and for the city to then advocate as part of that public utilities, or you could submit a letter as part of public comment conveying the city's wishes.
And so, that's something that we can talk about tonight? Because these calls are coming up in the next two days?
When it comes to my comments, I'll talk about it.
Okay, great. And I think that this, with the senior task force, things like Meals on Wheels, which my dad takes part of, could be part of this sort of communication task force because we have to take better care of the seniors. I would also like to know about the Bluff Park. That bluff where the Escha was, how do I find the history of how that went down? So, we have grading on it with the, across from the Bluffs. And I haven't heard anything about it.
The Edison lot.
The Edison lot. So, like, what's the history on that? How do we?
Well, I can tell you very quickly, the Fire Department is the one that graded it, but that had been previously graded for a nursery years ago. And I'm not sure the...
I was talking about across from the, like, Las Burgeness, the hotel, the Weintraub lot?
Right, Weintraub, yeah, the Weintraub lot. The Fire Department's the one that graded it. And under their, because it was under the emergency rules, And under their, it was under the emergency rules, but they also have remediation requirement. They have to come back and put it back the way it was.
Do they have a timeframe for that?
It's usually about nine months.
So like, in nine months, it gets put back?
Yeah, they've got to get Edison off the lot right now.
Right. And things like voting on a czar, when does that happen?
Well, I think we were going to have that on the, one of the council items, or special meetings.
Coming up?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, who wants to go next?
I'll be quick, I don't have that. I agree with the process of trying to get those lines underground. I'm not sure what, you know, whether we set a letter to the Public Utilities Commission or how we make a stand in there, but I do think that's the right thing to do. Beach cleanup. I'm just surprised that there's not some law or something that we can put in force that will enable us to go in there and clean up some of those houses that are sitting on the beach. I talked to Yolanda, I mean, she's trying to contact these people. Some of them we just can't find, they won't call, we don't call back. And it just seems to me, if that's not a health hazard or an environmental hazard, I don't know what the hell is. So I mean, Trevor, isn't there some law that we can call upon that will allow the Army Corps of Engineers to go in there and just clean those things up? Because they could be there forever, as far as I know. This stuff, you know, I mean, there's still people from Woolsey we haven't contacted, we haven't heard that from. Anything we can do?
To facilitate the removal of the...
Allow us to go in there without getting all these write-of-entry forms that, you know, we can't get because we can't contact the people. Isn't there some, you know, this is a health hazard, it's an environmental hazard. I mean, I, you know, and leaving it sit there without doing anything just seems to me to be wrong. So is there not something we can do to push that?
We could request assistance from the governor to get an order to allow us to do work in there. You could go get a court order. You would need to make a strong showing of a nuisance and be able to then take on the expense to go and do it. The Army Corps does have more powers than, you know, us as a local jurisdiction to go and take action on a number of different things. I believe Yolanda has looked into these issues a lot. I think a lot of it depends on getting the direction from the governor, which we requested, also working with the county, which we have been doing, and seeking a funding source to cover the removal of those. And we've been, staff's been pushing on that, but the more that it can be accelerated...
We have requested, what did we request from the governor? What did we ask him to do for us? He said we contacted him. What did we ask for?
So if I may, Councilmember Yaring, the letter that was approved at the special meeting on the 27th, that was a specific letter to the governor asking for him to declare that it, to include the beachfront home cleanups as part of Phase Two, specifically the septic. And I know council expanded on that to touch on some of the homes within the watershed area. By way of process, what needs to happen? Because the septic on the beachfront homes was not included as part of the Phase Two, the governor has to mission-task CAL OES to declare that as part of the emergency specifically. CAL OES, if not able to clean that up, would then need to make the request of FEMA, which then gets us to the Army Corps of Engineers. So that is what, at the council's authorization of the mayor to sign that letter, that was sent up to the governor's office. We have been working with them and pressing to get that moving forward. But that's the way of the process to get the Army Corps of Engineers involved. Yolanda's been very critical in that conversation, back and forth between the Army Corps of Engineers. And we are working with the governor's office, trying to get this resolved as quickly as possible.
Doug, you know, the lobbyists we have in Sec, can they help us at all in this deal?
They can, but I think there's already a solution in place. I believe if you don't complete the ROE or have your own opt-out, then the State Office of Emergency Services can do an override and cause the cleanups to take place. I think that's the case. Trevor, or somebody might, I believe I heard that in one of the meetings. I'm only relating...
Someone confirm that?
Can we find out and confirm that?
Mayor, we can definitely go back and confirm that, but it is in line with what Deputy City Manager Brown was referencing, as we were trying to work with state entities on the cleanup.
But I think that applies to all the lot cleanups. If you don't have it cleaned up, if you haven't turned in the form by, I believe, March 31st, then you're in the default.
If someone could just confirm that. I mean, I really do think, you know, we have got to get that beach cleaned up. And if we don't push real hard...
It's international news. I mean, it's on newspapers in France that Malibu, the narrative is that Malibu's not cleaning it up. And that's like where the council, people have sending me articles from France. And it's like, I can only punt so much and say, well, it's the governor, because it is, or the Army Corps. But at some point, we have to clean up our beach.
I agree. I know anybody in France, but the local people are calling me.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, very good. Your elderly task force, I mean, as you get further down the line, I mean, I, look, I agree, you can't leave these elderly people sitting out there in these fires without electricity, without phone service, without, so, you know, just keep me informed if I can help in that.
Thank you.
I think that's worth doing.
We have a plan.
And opening up PCH, I know this is a conversation we've had over and over and over again. We just got to keep pushing. I mean, you know, we're driving the residents crazy because they don't, depending upon who they talk to, they get different information and what the hell they're supposed to do. You know, there was the article in the LA Times, our businesses are dying and that's not going to get any better. So, you know, and I don't have a solution for you. If I did, if I had the silver bullet, I'd give it to you guys. But we just got to keep pushing because we got to get that thing open. It's just, we're killing ourselves. So, all right, thank you very much, Mayor.
Okay, who wants to go next?
I'll go next. So first of all, on this latest subject that we were just talking about, the hazard at the ocean. My understanding is that we actually can declare an emergency specifically related to that. I mean, we have the power to declare a public, what is it, a local emergency if there's a danger to the health, safety, and welfare of the community as a result of a situation that's outside of our control. We did that with PCH. I sat up here and I advocated, when we did the PCH one, that means we have extraordinary powers to do things we ordinarily would not do, and we have immunity from liability if it turns out we did something that we shouldn't have done, or if it causes further mischief. But we have the ability to declare a local emergency, or whatever the exact words are. And I got to say, when I was in private practice, if my law firm represented the city of Malibu and this was going on, we would be researching 24/7, and we'd have 10, 20, 30 people working on it if necessary, and finding a solution. We wouldn't just be waiting for someone else to act. There is an ongoing emergency. We could easily declare one. Arguably, we already did by the original emergency declaration, and we should be doing something. And we should be forcing, and we should be asking the state to work with us to do this. This is not a question of we need to rely on other people. These properties are within the city limits of Malibu. They're sitting on the beach, they're City of Malibu properties, they're on this side of the state lands. And I think it's inexcusable that we're just waiting, I mean, the mayor's statement about, there'll come a time when if people don't sign the ROE and they don't do the cleanup on their own, then we'll go to court and we'll declare it a nuisance and we'll finally do, and we'll get the state to do something. You know, that's too late. So that's my comment on that.
How do we get that done, Bruce?
It's a piece of paper, and I vote by the city council. But, I mean, you know, we need some legal advice, and we need legal advice based, steeped in significant research on what our options are. I remember reading a case when we did the PCH, I had brought this to the council's attention. There was a water district, and there was a flood. And so they needed to do something to stem the flood. So they got bulldozers and they started bulldozing land. And it turned out they were not even in their own district, they ended up being in the district next to them. And they got sued. And the court said, no, they declared an emergency. So what if they made a mistake in terms of where they ended up going? They have immunity under the statute. I mean, we need to look into these kinds of things. We need to be exercising our powers and not just saying, there's nothing we can do, we're asking other people to do it.
Trevor, can your firm help us figure that out?
Absolutely.
So how do we do that? What do we have to ask you to do or ask?
We can bring back a report to the council with options that are available, and also an update about where things stand with the governor's office and with CAL OES and the county at this point in time.
You can't get that report to us soon enough.
We can bring it back, we can bring it back as a future agenda item. It's not on the agenda tonight, we can bring it back.
We're having another meeting. When, like, in special meeting? Right? Right, how many?
Councilmember Conrad, after this, you're about to have a discussion on additional meetings.
Great.
Okay. I'm going to get to the public comments in a few moments. My second thing that I had prepared for this, we've talked before about local businesses that are in dire need of assistance. I was at the Community Closet the other day, two days ago. That's the donation center or relief center that's been set up with the Compass Building next to the Jewish Center. And they were giving out gift cards that were purchased for various local businesses. And I went up to the person that was doing this, I said, those businesses didn't give you gift cards, right? Because like, that would have been horrendous if the local businesses were digging into their pockets. Said, no, local, you know, residents are going to these local businesses, buying gift certificates, bringing them to be donated, which does two great things. One is it puts some income in the pockets of the local businesses, and two, it gives the people who have lost their homes from the fire some money to spend on local businesses. So I want to encourage everyone who's here, everyone who's watching, not the people who lost their homes, but anyone who's out there that can afford it, dip into your pocket, go buy some gift certificates, take them to the Community Closet, take them to the Boys and Girls Club, I'm sure they would be happy to receive them and give them out. And that's another way that we can be helping, two birds of one stone, both the local businesses as well as those who lost their homes. I'll be talking about some things I want to do with meetings when we get to that. Just want to respond to some of the public comments. And once again, thank you, everybody, for who submitted comments, both in writing and spoke tonight. So I hate to be the one who's negative all the time in terms of what our abilities are. But the fact is, I mean, our staff is great, and our staff knows how to review projects and decide whether they comply with our code or don't, or with the LCP or don't. But they're not in the business of helping to build 700 homes. That's just not what they do. That's not what they're built for. There was a, I remember during one of the earlier meetings, somebody put up a chart and it showed planning, if you're doing like-for-like PV, and then there were a whole bunch of other things, and it said, these are all gone. And then someone made the, and then on the other side was building and safety, and there were a whole bunch of things that were necessary. And somebody made the comment, I don't remember who, they said, now we want to see Xs on the other side. We want to see, we need to get out of the way. I don't know how many times I'm going to say this, but we are not, we need to tell you what we can't do and what we can do. And I am concerned that there's not much we can do. We have this building center, if you build like-for-like, truly like-for-like, the governor's order has provided immense flexibility, but even then, not on the building and safety side. And I think we need to be looking at what the city of Los Angeles is doing. I don't know where they've landed in terms of they've been exploring self-certification. We need to look at what the county is doing. At a bare minimum, we need to follow them. They're putting substantially more resources, which they have, that we don't have, into solving this problem. And we need to piggyback on whatever solution they come up with, if it's one that's helpful. If they don't do it, eh, doesn't mean we can't go further. But I think we just need to get out of the way, because no matter how much we talk about wanting to help and wanting to see you all build back quickly and build, we're going to have another Woolsey. I just, I know we're going to be sitting here five years from now with the same exact problems if we don't get out of the way, and we need to find ways to get out of the way. And again, that's not a diss to our staff, the staff is not built to help build 700 homes. Just, that's a fact. And we need to enable, we need enabling legislation. We don't need legislation that sets the parameters, we just need to enable. We do need, I mean, I'm persuaded from hearing from residents repeatedly, we need a rebuild manager or management team, and I don't mean one that is comprised of the staff. We need to let the residents choose one or more people from their own body that they have confidence in, that can help lead the project. That person or persons can be a liaison. I don't think they should be an employee of the city. I don't think they should be answerable to the city manager or to the city council. They need to be a liaison, but they need to be empowered to act on behalf of the residents in some way, shape, or form of. Hopefully, that's something we'll be doing at one of our meetings, is discussing how to make that happen. You know, maybe there won't be a majority of votes to let it happen, but I'm one of the ones that wants to see it happen. And again, I just want to dwell on this point that I asked Trevor for comment before on Luis's point. It is my understanding, once again, and I think it's pretty clear, the governor's order, assuming it's legally enforceable, and I don't have any reason to believe it's not, I haven't heard anybody challenging it, says that all permits under the Coastal Act, which means our LCP, are suspended for purposes of a like-for-like rebuild in substantially the same location. And it says, we get to decide what properties are eligible for that based on reading the governor's order, and we get to decide what it means, what a like-for-like is, and there's various other parameters, which we need to have a meeting to set forth a policy document for. It says, no one can appeal to the coastal commission that decision that we make. And the coastal commission cannot itself inject itself into our decision. So once we definitively determine what a like-for-like is, I think we've gone a long way towards that already, and this height issue is one example of that. We've deliberated on that, we've explained that a higher elevation doesn't alter the height of the building. The building gets to go from that higher elevation up to the highest point of the roof, and that doesn't change, that's the height, from the bottom elevation to the top of the roof. The coastal commission can't disagree with us. I mean, they can shout all they want, but they have no jurisdiction to disagree with us. That provision in the LCP that we just proposed, that gives them a direct appeal to the coastal commission, that's not for Palisades like-for-like rebuilds. That's for Franklin, Broad, Woolsey, and anything else that comes down the line, it's a natural disaster. But it does not apply to the Palisades. So Luis, I respect your knowledge of this stuff, and I love the information you bring to us, but you're just mistaken on that one. That is, the way has been cleared on that. And the point I made before is, you know, that is an incredible incentive for everyone in the city, especially on the beach, to build back like-for-like. If you don't build back like-for-like, you're going to have to get a CDP. And when you go to get your CDP, that's appealable to the coastal commission. And they might have a different interpretation of height than we have. And they may insist on view corridors. And they may not let you build your home out to the same, out as far into the water as it was before, or out as far onto the beach as it was before. Anyone who doesn't build back like-for-like, who's been given amazing flexibility pursuant to the governor's order, may end up with a substantially, by trying to go for something bigger, may end up with something dramatically smaller. So please build back like-for-like. And we're going to be discussing who's qualified for the rebuild center. And again, I've said before, I don't think anyone who's not going for like-for-like should even get the benefit of our rebuild center and its specialized staff. I know I may be in the minority on that, or I may be in a bare majority, we'll find Just a couple more. Jefferson's point about, I don't know if it's true or not true, but I, you know, I take him to be honest about it, that employees of Nobu and Soho have passes to get through PCH because they're essential workers or essential employees, I call bull. If that, if they have passes, they need to have those passes revoked. So I'm going to actually ask if the acting city manager can reach out to the sheriff's department, find out if it's true that passes have been given to employees of Nobu, because they don't live in the burn area and they are not essential workers. And if they are essential workers, everyone who works in Malibu is an essential worker, which I actually would support. But if everyone in Malibu is not an essential worker, people who work at Nobu are not essential workers. So could you please check into whether that's true? Craig, good to see you, good to hear from you tonight. I want to thank you for your five years of service on the planning commission, you were appointed by Mikey originally. Then I picked you up when you were done with the service, in my view, by being asked to step down, so appreciate all the work you've done. I wish you the best with your rebuild. And I'll be making an appointment at the next meeting, and I'm going to be appointing someone who has no development experience. I'm going to put in an average resident of the city of Malibu who can provide a different set of eyes and a fresher perspective to what is otherwise laden with professionals. And I think we need professionals on that commission, but we also need average residents who understand what everyone's going through and can take a different perspective. So that'll be coming up next meeting. And the last thing I have here is this point about the lot at PCH and Malibu Canyon Road. Yeah, I don't get what happened there. I don't understand that the fire department necessarily had the power to just take control of that without going through the city. If they did, I'd like to understand better how that worked. It's a tragedy, what they did to that property. And yes, they may have an obligation to restore it, but so did SCE with the Bell Lot, which sits below this building, covered in concrete, six years after Woolsey, it hasn't been restored. And there was wetland there, and there was escha there, and I don't know how it's ever going to be returned. And I know they're going to be arguing to the coastal commission that it wasn't there, and you can't prove it was there because we covered it in concrete, so na, na, na. And I suspect we're going to be facing the same kind of problem with the lot at the corner of PCH and Malibu Canyon Road. And we need to make sure that does not happen. That's it from me for tonight.
Mary Ann, you're next.
Okay. All right, there's a lot to talk about. To all of those who think that we don't, we haven't had anybody in charge, we have had an excellent staff in charge. I think that the work by our acting city manager, Joe Tony, and our deputy city manager, Alexis Brown, they've shown great leadership, they have stayed on top of everything having to do with Malibu. They have staffed countless amounts of meetings, they have made sure that the staff has been tasked with not only doing their EOC work, but also keeping the functions going of the regular city hall for the remaining visitors, and helping the council stay abreast of all the different meetings that we've been requested to attend. So I just want to compliment them, and I think they've done an excellent job with everything that they've been asked to do. And they have risen to an incredibly difficult task and have done an outstanding. So to say that we don't have anybody in charge, I would take issue with that till the end of time. Let's see. For people trying to navigate Pacific Coast Highway, our highway is going to be impacted for months, if not years. We lost over 300 homes along Pacific Coast Highway. There is major infrastructure on that. Between the undergrounding, the debris removal, the reconstruction, all the things that need to be done on that thoroughfare that connects us with Santa Monica, it's going to be a long, long term, that it's going to be impacted one way or another. And I'm sorry to be the bearer of that bad news, and I know it's frustrating for everybody who uses that corridor for commuting. One alternative, we do have the metro bus restarted. I know people out here don't necessarily want to take the public bus, but they're running about every 30 minutes to and from Santa Monica. It doesn't stop in the burn area, other than the flashing red lights that are going on. And so you're getting it straight through there, you can connect to other public transportation, you can, as they did back in the 70s and 80s, park a car on either end of it and have a commuter vehicle on that, set up car pools once you're in that area. I'm sorry, that is the reality of what's going on, and we really, really, really need to face that fact. Hopefully, it ends up sooner, but that's something that we need to embrace. We can look at some other things, but that's what we have now. They're offering some discounted fares for fire burn areas, and if you're paying full fare, it's $1.75. You can also get a tap card, and those are available online with your phone. It's a very, very easy thing for people to do. I used to ride the bus to Santa Monica, it's how I got to San Moi when I was going to school. So I'm very familiar with this. There's talk about having a multi-home... There's talk about having a multi-home rebuild and organizing for things, and my question is, where does the individual homeowner fit into that? I understand about trying to consolidate reports and geology reports, coastal engineering reports, wave up rush reports. That's something the city can absolutely have discussions about, and I think it's a very, very valid point. It's something that I think we do have the economy of scale, and there's some very important things that can be done as a time saver that we can look at. But just when we're talking about having somebody come in that we can't build a single home and that's inefficient and everything else, well, these homeowners also have a choice to rebuild their home how they want to do it, and I don't want that lost in this effort. Speaking of that debris removal, I know we're having a terrible time with the pollution that's going in the ocean, and it breaks my heart to do that. I would love to see if we could have some type of shoring or something until these homes get properly debris removal. People have got to get your ROEs in, if you're going to opt in. If you're choosing to opt out, you must get your paperwork in so we know who has plans to do their debris removal, whether you're opting in or opting out. And then that'll leave the rest of the names that we don't have accounted, that we can concentrate on finding those property owners and getting them either in one of the programs or knowing that the county or the state is going to have to take over their debris removal. So, please, 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 get your paperwork in ASAP so we know where you're at. Seniors, we have an incredible senior center here at the city of Malibu, both through Woolsey, COVID, Franklin, Broad, didn't really need to be doing it, but Palisades. In addition to operating the EOC, our staff was contacting people who have been connected with the senior center. So, if you're a senior that's out there in our community, please reach out to our local senior center. Let them know who you are, where you are, what your special needs may be. With regards to Meals on Wheels, I would contact the senior center and the city staff and see if that's not something that we can get restarted, because I do think that is a vital service that should be taken care of. And if there's other things, if the medical professionals out there need to connect, reach out to our senior center also. See what already exists and what services the city is providing. I know they've gotten Dial-A-Ride restarted, so people can go to appointments. They can use our Dial-A-Ride service, and that connects both into Santa Monica, West LA, and also over to the Valley Woodland Hills. So, if you have doctor's appointments or you have other services that you need to attend to, Dial-A-Ride is available for our seniors. So, just get signed up at our senior center. Another great thing that we have in our community for the Palisades and Franklin and Broad fires, and whether Woolsey or not will be fit in theirs, we have the Malibu Rebuild Center. It opened today, and I was there. I was there on Friday. I've walked through it. I've seen all the staff that are in there. They're having an open house on March 19th from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. They're providing times for appointments where you can find out everything you need to do in order to be able to rebuild your house. What you're going to need for your planning application, what you're going to need for your building plan check submittal, what documents are required, how long the expected turnaround is. The fastest way to get through your rebuild is to learn what your requirements are for building safety plan check. That's available on our city website. You can find that through malaburebuilds.org. All the information is there, all the handsouts are there, all the code requirements that you're going to have to adhere to, what your design professionals should be planning for. You can go there now and have appointments and talk to staff and find out all the information about what is there. I know people are out there shaking their heads, but guess what? Go talk to them. Find out what's there. The city has a robust outreach for the rebuilds. And complete submittals, make sure that your design professionals are seeing what is required. And then, you know, I know of at least one architect in this community that gets their approvals in building plan check through the building safety done in two rounds, two. They are extremely diligent on making sure that they have everything done and very thorough in watching that, so I know it can be done. Communications, there is set for an SCE town hall, and remind me that date's next week, I believe?
Correct. It is Thursday, March 20th, and we'll have more info on our website very shortly.
Do you know, have we invited the communications corporation to be here?
Oh, telecom to be part of the SCE conversation? I don't believe offhand. It was focused on SCE specifically, but we can, we can reach out.
So, I don't know if we have consensus from the council that we'd like to see the communications there. I think it is a good thing, if it's possible, if that could be put together, have everybody in the same room, I think is a good way to have that. I don't know if at this late date, if you can put that.
Yeah, I was going to say, we can definitely ask. I don't know if we'll be able to pull them in or not. If not, we can try to have a separate telecom one.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you. Let's see. Oh, the resource officer for the schools. I don't know if we have a consensus up here to bring an item back to talk about funding for that. I know I brought it up last fall and didn't get any traction. I would very much like to see if we can have an item brought forward to see if we can have funding appropriated.
Is it okay to bring it back for another meeting?
Mike? You're Mike.
Is it okay to bring it back for another meeting? You have a consensus on that?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Great, thank you.
Including whether Santa Monica ought to be paying for it.
That's who should pay. But we'll see.
Yeah, we'll take that for another. Councilmember Euring mentioned with Surf Rider, I'm sorry, with the Santa Monica Bay restoration about the possible on the sea caves. I think that is an incredible thing. I was going to work on that and reach out to Supervisor Horvath. I know they have a robust environmental programs and trying to do things for our beaches, so I plan on working with her office to see how we can move that forward. I think it'll be incredibly beneficial for us.
When you do that, is there a way to incorporate kids or education? Just as a thought. Because, I don't know, I don't want to complicate it, but that was what I was going to reach out to the gentleman about.
Sure, yeah. Let's see, let me just, sorry, let me just double check my list here. Talked about that, talked about that, talked about that. Debris removal, get your paperwork in. And, oh, acting city manager, Tony. There's been several conversations about FEMA and reimbursements. Would you please educate us that the city has done everything it possibly can to make sure that we are going to submit the proper paperwork in order to get whatever reimbursements the federal government plans to give us?
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem Riggins, with every disaster, we follow a process where we document, document, and document, and then we submit everything that we possibly can. No, we will not get 100% reimbursement. That's just not how it works, but we try. And anywhere where we think that there might be a reimbursement, we submit that. It doesn't mean we'll get it, but we go through that process. It's an after-the-fact process. FEMA does their audits, and often many things are denied, but we have absolutely done everything we can to track our expenses, and we'll be submitting all of that through the proper process.
Thank you. And then, my just two last things are, the little earthquakes have given us our little wake-up call. Make sure everybody has their thing. It's a great time to reach out to your neighbors and find out if they need assistance. Check on people, have your own information. And with the rains coming this week, that's another thing to be prepared for. Some of the burn areas, you definitely should be on the planning that there could be debris flows and other things, so have a plan, be ready, check on your neighbors, and take care of everybody, and we'll see you on Wednesday.
Okay, it's back to me. You know, one of the good things about coming last is everybody's already covered a lot of the stuff, so it's a lot cleaner this way. One thing I'd like to make a comment on the FEMA, unlike prior disasters where I think it was 70 or 75% reimbursable, this is 100% reimbursable this time around. So, we may not get everything approved, but what we get approved is a much higher number presented.
Correct. Well, it's for the first six months, 100%, yeah, category A B reimbursement.
Okay. To Craig Hill, Craig, you and I may not have always seen things the same way, but it's been wonderful to have you as a voice, especially on the planning commission, and your service is very much appreciated, and I wish you the best on getting your house rebuilt, and you know, you've done a lot for the city. Hopefully, the city can help you too. So, thank you.
Thanks, Doug.
All right.
I second that. Sorry, I forgot you, Craig.
And I'll say this about our two city managers, assistant city manager and deputy city manager. I've said this before, and I'll say it publicly up here, we had our backup quarterbacks in the game, and they won it. And you can say what you want to about it could have been done better, it could have been done differently, but you know what? We won the game. And they've been doing the job with three people with two people. So, this is, this is a real hats off to them, and I couldn't be more pleased and proud to work with them. So, thank you guys very much. Go over some things. We talked about the rebuild center a little bit. I was over there this afternoon. Haley and I walked over just to see what it looked like. It's impressive as it could be. I encourage you to go over, take a look at it. But you know what I got out of it? Besides the staff was all working diligently and trying to help, we ran into two people that had been through the rebuild center today. They were telling us how great the experience was, how great everybody helped them, how wonderful it was to be in there. I mean, it was, it was like an ad. And this is two people that walked in, had their plans done, and were actually enjoying the sun outside the building, and were glad to talk to us about how well it went. Went inside, ran into a person that just got his application processed and in. Tenth one, tenth one. Four, four, the first four were damaged houses. The next ones, his was the first one today that had plus 10% because the city staff asked him to wait until the ordinance was fully in place. We're getting this stuff done, and you can talk all you want to about they're not necessarily here to help and so forth. Those people were satisfied customers. So, I will tell you, as somebody who used to work in the retail side of business, that's what you want to see, are the smiles on the faces, and the people are glad and extolling the virtues of the experience they just had. The letter to DC that sent a package today, this was not something we decided to send in, it was requested by the governor's office to help try and get this over the line for the 39.6 million. We're sending the letter in, city of Los Angeles is, and the county is doing it as well. It's the three of us. So, you can talk, talk about the way this is working out. They're asking for our assistance to lobby with the people in DC, and that's what we're doing. Grant writer, people forget, we have a professional grant writing contract, so we have specialized people in each area for grants. Instead of just having one person on who has to learn every nuance, whenever there's a grant opportunity, they have a specialist that writes the grants for us, and they're successful with that. See, I talked about the rebuild center, essential workers. It's my understanding that if you have a job in Malibu, you can show your connection to it, you're able to get an essential worker's pass. So, that people, whether you're working at the dry cleaner, or you're working at a restaurant, Nobu's a restaurant, so Soho, these people are working there. This isn't to take anything away from Nobu and Soho or any of these other places. It's the fact that you've got a low-income person, quite often a tip waiter, a valet, somebody that's working minimum wage, needs to get them a job here. There's over 1,000 people that the Chamber of Commerce believes are dependent upon working in Malibu, that we're trying to make sure they don't lose their jobs, not only, not by getting here, but also by making sure their business is still in operation. Let's see, what else? Water tanks. I want to make sure that everybody's clear about this. We worked diligently on this last week. Water tanks, if they're required, aren't going to be allowed. Water tanks that are recommended are going to be allowed, and it's recommended by the state or the county or so forth. And a swimming pool with a draft on it is considered to be a water supply. So, if you've got a drafting pool, you've got it. So, you just don't have to have a static tank of 20,000 gallons, you can go swim in it. So, that's, by the way, the drafting requirement's been around since, I believe, 2005 for every new swimming pool. Let's see, water tanks, secure that. Let's talk about EPA. There was a, and I'm in context to call them, tell us all the news that they come up with. If you haven't, if you've gone down PCH, you've got access down there, you'll notice that the EPA site at Topanga looks pretty dormant right now. The tents down, everything else, it's closed. It's done. Same for the one at Will Rogers Beach. It's closed. It's done. They've moved what little requirements they need on household waste removal, which is going to be done now by the Corps of Engineers or the Phase Two contractor, probably Phase One contractor that, when you opt out, that's being taken to Tomescal. There's an actual crushing yard and steel recycling bin up on Tomescal in the city of Los Angeles in the Palisades. That's where that's all going. And if you're wondering where the household materials went, after all the uproar about, you know, where are you going to put it and so forth, it all went to Nevada. So, that's where it went. Let's see, anything else? Metro bus, I've talked about this before. I sent my number one.
Don't call.
I've got to say, I started to say something that was going to get me in trouble. Everybody knows my wife. It was, it was going downhill real quick. My number one test person, I sent my wife on the bus the other day so she could see what it was like. 7:04, and I'll repeat this again, and I've talked this before, she picked up the bus at 7:40 AM at Corral. She parked her car right there, picked it up, $1.75 with her tap card, she got it to the library, and they got it refilled, and she drove, and she was at the pier at 8:30. She then decided to get off the bus, take the next one, and she was back home in about the same amount of time. If you're not sure about the schedule, there's an app called Motive that tells you where the bus is, so you can see it coming. There's no reason not to use the bus, and as Mary Ann said, it's public transportation that everybody used to use, but right now, it's kind of best if you want to get to Santa Monica, where you can take an Uber or another transport vehicle and get back and forth. Dial-A-Ride is working diligently. We just, I just had a conversation with some people here about that. There was a question about the fact that it doesn't go to Ventura County. They're going to look into that and see if that'll help. Otherwise, if you're a 60 and over senior citizen, or you have special medical needs, Dial-A-Ride is your ticket to the doctor and back. Lastly, undergrounding. Boy, this has been an interesting round for me. I got the phone calls on Thursday, Friday, and it became clear we had a visible issue. Turns out, SCE, and now I'm relaying things that have been told to me, so it's not like I know this for a fact, but I've been told by senior people, SCE is required by the PUC to underground their major circuits. Those are the ones that feed Malibu. As far as the distribution circuits, like the ones that are being put back in Big Rock and Los Flores, that's also required for them to do. As far as how they do it, they have an annual right-of-entry agreement with the city, which is an open item about how they handle their digging and so forth, entrenching. They're not required to have the telecoms go in that, and vice versa, the telecoms are not required to have SCE go in theirs, but all of them are required to go underground. And according to the telecoms, and let's talk about where it's going to work well, it's on PCH. They're right now at the red line drawings to get all of PCH underground from, I believe it's, I'm going to do this wrong, I think it was Rambla, it was Rambla, Pacifica, but it was about in the Carbon Mesa area, that area, all the way to Topanga. So, that's all going to be undergrounded by the SCE and the telecoms working together one trench. They're working with Caltrans about which side of the street it's going to be on and where it's going to go, and right now, it's more on the land side than it is on the beach side. It's moved, even as they've been discussing this. Anyway, as far as the telecoms for the ones that are going in place, the ones that I'll call it up slope are being told that SCE is going to move ahead, and the telecoms can come in right beside them at very little expense and put those in right next to them, and it won't be a big deal. That's what they're being told. So, with that, we're looking at SCE moving from the east side with the fire damage, moving toward the west. They've accelerated their transition time to make it all the way across the city from about four or five years to shorter time, but I'm not buying into anything except for fire rebuilds at this point. The fire rebuilds are underway right away for SCE. They've got temporary generators in. They're only putting up the necessary poles to get, get through the transition, and the idea is that as they move further along, the telecoms will be moving along with them. I spoke directly with Verizon, sorry, not Verizon. I spoke directly with Verizon, sorry, not Verizon, Frontier and Spectrum. Talked to their senior people, got the answer from this, from their mouths about what's going on. Yes, there's a lot of this, and Wade could have been more accurate. Playground gymnastics, or however you want to call it. But SCE is doing their part. Telecoms are doing their part. The telecoms don't work together well either. You know, you've got Frontier, doesn't want to be in the same trench necessarily with the other guys. They don't want the same conduit and so forth. But they're all going to get underground. That's where they're headed. And it's going to be messy while they do it. But at the end of the day, it's going to be underground. And yet, there may be a wider trench than it was before, but they're going underground. All right. Let's see, what else I've got on this? That's all I have to talk about. I think I've said more than enough. It's now 9:07. We've got one more item to go, I think, on the agenda. Is that correct? Do you? Do we want to take a break? Do we want to power through?
How much discussion do we think we'll have?
I don't know. Take a break? All right. Literally, let's be back at 9:15. How's that? I mean, literally, back. As opposed to what we've been doing before. It's been like 10 minutes goes to 20.
Yeah.
Let's get started again. Back in session. First item and the only item we have left is 6A.
Yes, Mayor, this is a verbal presentation. The council had requested to have additional meetings or potential for additional meetings on the agenda. So we came back with a proposal to do every week that we do not have a council meeting. So instead of, and this would be on a Thursday afternoon. So instead of it being this week, it would be next week. It would alternate the weeks that we don't have a council meeting. You could decide if you want to also do that on the last week of the month or not. If you want to have a dark week, totally up to you. But that's what we were proposing. And there had also been the suggestion for moving the council reports, city manager reports, those items to the end of the meeting to focus more on city business and to streamline the meeting. So we proposed that in this iter, in this iteration for you, and that's what's in the resolution. And then happy to discuss, take any questions and discuss as you see fit.
Okay, thank you very much. We've got a couple speakers that want to talk to us. First one is Dean. You're up, and then Joe Drummond.
So I know you guys, you'll all make the right decision. But my dilemma with this, from what I see and perceive, is staff needs to be involved, you need to be involved, the community needs to be involved. The problem with more meetings is the more you all are here, the less you're getting done. I know the meetings are used because I see a lot of education taking place. I've been educating myself too. So it makes sense. But if we keep up with more meetings, I think we're going to get less done. But out of the other side of my mouth, and I'll talk out of both sides of my mouth on occasion, we need more meetings so that we can understand one another in a line. So I do think we need more meetings. But what I think we need to do is make them a hell of a lot more effective. The discussion is good, but I think we need to find a way to time limit them. We need to know what good looks like in a line before we're having the meeting. If some people think a rebuild in five to six years is good, and I think it's got to be 18 months, we ain't on the same page. We're wasting our time talking about issues. Because when I sit at the table, I'm challenging myself as to how do I get where I want to be? But if you're doing that, and you're thinking you've got three times as much time, you're not thinking the same. So I think we need to define what good looks like. And maybe I don't like the answer, but let's get on the same page. Right? The other thing is, as an example, Mary Ann, you and I just had a discussion two minutes in the back of the room. And I think we agree, there's some things that need to change, right? That's why I was shaking my head in the back of the room. And you agree with me. We did that in two minutes. I don't have to wait till Wednesday at 4 o'clock to have 30 people discuss it. So I'm asking you to charge some of us to work with you to help do that. This is a perfect example of what I'm talking about. And we can do it for the better good of us all. Oh, God, I've got so much to talk about in so little time. It's really not fair on the three minutes, but I'll challenge and I'll adapt. Telecoms, I heard you talk. I was out on my property. They've got 30-inch water mains shown on PCH side. So a foot inside the white line on the road, they're showing a 30-inch main. They're showing a 3 through 10 inside of that towards the water, and then a 2-inch inside of that towards the water. Right? So if that's going in there at the same time, I hope somebody's looking at it because all the bulkheads on PCH have been burned out. So I hope they know what they're doing when they go to do that, if that's what they're doing. I don't know what the markings are. I know they're water, and I know what size they are. The reason I have doubt is at the same time I'm on my property, Mark Wessels comes up. I have a nice discussion with him about cleanup. Then I catch the public work guys going around, and they're doing reconnaissance. So I took them over to one of my neighbors a couple down, and he's lost four foot of his asphalt at the beach. And their comeback is, oh, it's the waves. He didn't have a seawall. I said, bullshit. It's not that at all. It's because the drainage isn't right coming off the bluff. And it's undercutting the road from the bluff. It has nothing to do with the waves.
Your three minutes is up.
Fair enough. But I just want to give you examples so that you understand what we're talking about.
Okay, thank you. Our beeper didn't run.
I'll fix it.
Okay, Joe, go ahead.
Hello again. Obviously, we do need workshops because they did, that one last week worked well, working with the community and the professionals and the staff. Number one workshop we need is for the rebuild manager czar so that we can, this person can work with city staff to expedite our rebuilds with efficiency and cost effectiveness as well as to streamline. The workshops need to streamline every aspect of the building and safety process where most of the roadblocks occur. This is the number one priority so this person can recruit a team of expeditors from every neighborhood and work with our local building professionals. Abe has already created a wonderful website that perhaps Patricia Salazar can help plug in the existing numbers for Woolsey rebuilds in there as well. We need a workshop to include the following, plus, plus, only for like-for-like, which includes up to 10%. Building and safety to prevent roadblocks for our fire rebuilds. It must be separated into subcategories. Pro certification to be stamped to prove when a review is requested. Geo requirements, FEMA requirements, height restrictions, foundation requirements, structural engineering requirements, biological requirements, public works requirements, pool debris removal, et cetera, et cetera. We also need a Caltrans workshop for PCH changes and access. We should, at the very least, clean up PCH as soon as possible by the Army Corps, et cetera, so that all our businesses can open back up and residents and visitors can access PCH. We can have a separate lane allocated for contractors coming in and out, working on our rebuilds. And SCE and telecom workshops also need to be expedited. Also, with our hybrid Zoom meetings, the participants should only be allowed if they're Malibu residents and put on camera, just like Bruce was saying. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody on Zoom?
It's two raised hands. First is Ryan.
All right, Ryan, go ahead.
Thank you. I wanted to ask you, who picked the day of the week? If this is a suggestion, if staff is promoting this Thursday at 3 PM or if the council prefers Tuesdays? Because you would have three more days in the same work week to actually implement something that gets approved. Tuesday has been the alternate day of the week of existing council meetings in case there's a holiday on Monday, which occurs quite often. So the suggestion is, now that we're a grown-up city, why isn't the council just meeting on Tuesdays in general for every meeting? So I would suggest you consider doing that, that the other governments have figured it out already. That's how you get the most efficient use of the staff for the remaining week of implementing everything. So that's number one. The second is, I think you should switch numbers 11 and 13 on the order of the agenda because council items are always pushed off until the very last thing. And perhaps it would be better to introduce them a little earlier on in a meeting. And you can, of course, juggle these items between the regular meetings on Mondays currently and these meetings that are the additional meetings. So they don't have to mirror the same order. The third concern is about hearings and ordinances. That the proposal before you is that you'll be conducting hearings and ordinance adoptions on these 3 PM, middle-of-the-day meetings when most of the public cannot come. Anybody who's working or got a job or is, you know, in Santa Monica can't get back to Malibu. That's why the meetings are at 6:30. So I don't know if you need to adopt meetings on off weeks.
All right, we're all back up here on a diocese.
Let's get started again, back in session. First item and the only item we have left is 6A.
Yes, Mayor, this is a verbal presentation. The council had requested to have additional meetings or potential for additional meetings on the agenda. So we came back with a proposal to do every week that we do not have a council meeting. So instead of, and this would be on a Thursday afternoon, so instead of it being this week, it would be next week. It would alternate the weeks that we don't have a council meeting. You could decide if you want to also do that on the last week of the month or not. If you want to have a dark week, totally up to you. But that's what we were proposing. And there had also been the suggestion for moving the council reports, city manager reports, those items to the end of the meeting to focus more on city business and to streamline the meeting. So we proposed that in this iteration for you, and that's what's in the resolution. And then happy to take any questions and discuss as you see fit.
Okay, thank you very much. We've got a couple speakers that want to talk to us. First one is Dean, you're up, and then Joe Drummond.
So I know you guys, you'll all make the right decision, but my dilemma with this, from what I see and perceive, is staff needs to be involved, you need to be involved, the community needs to be involved. The problem with more meetings is the more you all are here, the less you're getting done. I know the meetings are used because I see a lot of education taking place. I've been educating myself, too. So it makes sense. But if we keep up with more meetings, I think we're going to get less done. But out of the other side of my mouth, and I'll talk out of both sides of my mouth on occasion, we need more meetings so that we can understand one another in a line. So I do think we need more meetings, but what I think we need to do is make them a hell of a lot more effective. The discussion is good, but I think we need to find a way to time limit them. We need to know what good looks like in a line before we're having the meeting. If some people think a rebuild in five to six years is good, and I think it's got to be 18 months, we ain't on the same page. We're wasting our time talking about issues. Because when I sit at the table, I'm challenging myself as to how do I get where I want to be? But if you're doing that and you're thinking you've got three times as much time, you're not thinking the same. So I think we need to define what good looks like. And maybe I don't like the answer, but let's get on the same page, right? The other thing is, as an example, Mary Ann, you and I just had a discussion, two minutes in the back of the room, and I think we agree, there's some things that need to change, right? That's why I was shaking my head in the back of the room, and you agree with me. We did that in two minutes. I don't have to wait till Wednesday at 4:00 to have 30 people discuss it. So I'm asking you to charge some of us to work with you to help do that. This is a perfect example of what I'm talking about, and we can do it for the better good of us all. Oh, God, I've got so much to talk about in so little time, it's really not fair on the three minutes, but I'll challenge and I'll adapt. Telecoms, I heard you talk. I was out on my property. They've got 30-inch water mains shown on PCH side. So a foot inside the white line on the road, they're showing a 30-inch main, they're showing a 3 through 10 inside of that towards the water, and then a 2-inch inside of that towards the water, right? So if that's going in there at the same time, I hope somebody's looking at it, because all the bulkheads on PCH have been burned out. So I hope they know what they're doing when they go to do that, if that's what they're doing. I don't know what the markings are, I know they're water and I know what size they are. The reason I have doubt is at the same time I'm on my property, Mark Wessels comes up, I have a nice discussion with him about cleanup, then I catch the public work guys going around, and they're doing reconnaissance. So I took them over to one of my neighbors a couple down, and he's lost four foot of his asphalt at the beach. And their comeback is, oh, it's the waves, he didn't have a seawall. I said, bullshit, it's not that at all. It's because the drainage isn't right coming off the bluff, and it's undercutting the road from the bluff. It has nothing to do with the waves.
Your three minutes is up.
Fair enough, but I just want to give you examples so that you understand what we're talking about.
Okay, thank you. Our beeper didn't run.
I'll fix it.
Okay, Joe, go ahead.
Hello again. Obviously, we do need workshops, because that one last week worked well, working with the community and the professionals and the staff. Number one workshop we need is for the rebuild manager czar, so that we can, this person can work with city staff to expedite our rebuilds with efficiency and cost effectiveness, as well as to streamline, the workshops need to streamline every aspect of the building and safety process where most of the roadblocks occur. This is the number one priority, so this person can recruit a team of expeditors from every neighborhood and work with our local building professionals. Abe has already created a wonderful website that perhaps Patricia Salazar can help plug in the existing numbers for Woolsey rebuilds in there as well. We need a workshop to include the following, plus, plus, only for like-for-like, which includes up to 10%. Building and safety, to prevent roadblocks for our fire rebuilds. It must be separated into subcategories, pro-certification, to be stamped to prove when a review is requested, geo-re requirements, FEMA requirements, height restrictions, foundation requirements, structural engineering requirements, biological requirements, public works requirements, pool debris removal, et cetera, et cetera. We also need a Caltrans workshop for PCH changes and access. We should, at the very least, clean up PCH as soon as possible by the Army Corps, et cetera, so that all our businesses can open back up and residents and visitors can access PCH. We can have a separate lane allocated for contractors coming in and out, working on our rebuilds, and SCE and telecom workshops also need to be expedited. Also, with our hybrid Zoom meetings, the participants should only be allowed if they're Malibu residents and put on camera, just like Bruce was saying. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody on Zoom?
Two raised hands, first is Ryan.
All right, Ryan, go ahead.
Thank you. I wanted to ask you, who picked the day of the week? If this is a suggestion, if staff is promoting this Thursday at 3:00 PM, or if the council prefers Tuesdays, because you would have three more days in the same work week to actually implement something that gets approved. Tuesday has been the alternate day of the week of existing council meetings, in case there's a holiday on Monday, which occurs quite often. So the suggestion is, now that we're a grown-up city, why isn't the council just meeting on Tuesdays in general for every meeting? So I would suggest you consider doing that, that the other governments have figured it out already. That's how you get the most efficient use of the staff for the remaining week of implementing everything. So that's number one. The second is, I think you should switch numbers 11 and 13 on the order of the agenda, because council items are always pushed off until the very last thing. And perhaps it would be better to introduce them a little earlier on in a meeting, and you can, of course, juggle these items between the regular meetings on Mondays currently and these meetings that are the additional meetings, so they don't have to mirror the same order. The third concern is about hearings and ordinances, that the proposal before you is that you'll be conducting hearings and ordinance adoptions on these 3:00 PM, middle-of-the-day meetings, when most of the public cannot come. Anybody who's working or got a job or is, you know, in Santa Monica, can't get back to Malibu, that's why the meetings are at 6:30. So I don't know if you need to adopt meetings on off weeks, or I'm sorry, adopt ordinances on off weeks. I would suggest you take adoption of ordinances off of these additional meetings and just have them at the regular meeting schedule. I advocate for 6:30 PM meetings. Hopefully, you'll catch up, and you won't need to start so early in the daytime. There was the prior speaker, I disagreed with the idea that we don't need more meetings. We definitely need 100% more meetings, because we have 100% more work to do, as if the subject matter of all the rebuilding isn't enough. We're going to have to hire a bunch of contract workers to implement a lot of these programs. Each department is going to need some additional help on a temporary basis of a couple years, public works, planning, and so forth. And a contracts administrator, you've got to hire Ray Taylor. He's got 27 years in the council of governments on this very subject. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else is next?
Wade Major.
Wade, go ahead.
I hate meetings, but I love getting things done. And I think every, what I've heard all of you say over time, especially when Bruce was saying, you know, I'll stay here and I'll do meetings days and days, and then as long as we get somewhere. I think we all feel the same. Meetings where you just get nothing done, meetings for the sake of meetings is no good. But this sounds like something that really will work, as long as it is coordinated in concert with our workshops, and as long as these meetings do enable us to move forward on all of these issues. I mean, it feels in a way like a little bit of a friendly race, like the city of Los Angeles, the county of Los Angeles, the city of Malibu are all trying to get to the same place, and we're all kind of pushing each other and looking at each other and talking to each other. So I think the more that we are able to get you guys together, the more we're able to do these workshops, the more we're able to communicate with staff, all those communication issues that people have been complaining about will start to dissipate. And I think three months will get us there. You know, all the things that we're talking about to get to that plate, it's not going to happen with just one resolution or two resolutions by your body. We're going to get there over time, a little bit of trial and error. You know, some of those first people going, who are so smiling inside the rebuild center, they're going to be followed by some people who are going to maybe not have such a great experience, but we're going to learn from that, you know? We're going to grow through this. So I do think that this is important, that we have these meetings. I think it's a really good idea. I support it entirely. I think Thursday at 3:00 PM is reasonable for almost everyone, just as long as we make sure that we are coordinating and moving forward. That's it, thanks.
Thank you, Wade. Who else?
Those are all the raised hands.
All right. That ends probably comments, let's bring you back up to the dais. If I want to start on this, or talk about it?
I'm happy to start.
All right, go ahead, Bruce.
So first of all, I want to just state that every time I say like-for-like, in case it's been misunderstood, I mean including the 10%, that's not a, I just use that as a shorthand. So the more I think about this, and the more I've been hearing from people, what I envision and what I think we need is more workshops. And I don't even mean like, the workshop we had the other day was great, but the workshop we had the other day was still too formal. The Brown Act interferes with our ability to get together and get things done, other than when we come to this meeting and are given a report and are given a very limited amount of time, and it's late and we're tired to reach agreement on things. We have a work plan workshop, we had two last year, where some members of the staff, senior members of staff, all the city council members, city attorney, some other people, would get together in the multipurpose room, we'd meet like from 10:00 till 2:00 or 3:00, and we'd actually work with each other to try to figure some things out and reach a consensus on how to move forward. I think we need to be doing things like that. Even that, to me, is a little too formal. I mean, what we, so what I want to see us doing, and by the way, I don't want to have more meetings, I don't want to be at more meetings, I have a life. So, you know, I'm doing this because I'm proposing these things, and I'm willing to do these things because the community needs us to be doing them, and we need to get things done. If it were up to me, you know, I could meet once a month, but we can't be doing that right now. So I'd like to see us at least every other week convene around 10:00 or 11:00 in the morning in a large room, and we'll have an objective for that day, like the policy document might be an example. And we'll actually hammer it out together, actually draft while we're talking. Maybe someone will come in with a proposal, maybe the staff, maybe one of us, maybe someone else come up with proposals. But Doug and I were an ad hoc committee for the policy that we adopted, the, what's it called?
Code of Conduct.
Code of Conduct. And the staff would prepare a draft, and then we would sit together for an hour or two, sometimes more, and we'd actually look at each word and work on it and edit it, and we got something, I think, meaningful done. We need to be doing that for these rebuilds. We need to be doing things like that. So that's what I had in mind when I was saying we're not meeting enough. I think Helen and I have talked about that, I think that's what she has in mind as well, but she can speak for herself, obviously. But, so, we have to have, the only way we can reach agreement on anything is when we're all together. That's the law. So we need to find ways to be all together, other than every other Monday night. And it needs to be in a situation where we're not spending two hours listening to public comment at three minutes apiece, but we're actually starting to work from the moment we get together until the moment we're done. Have lunch, work, you know, talk to each other during lunch. That's what I have in mind. So that's what I'd like to see. Lastly, I just want to make one last comment about the, and then I'll turn it over to about where we're headed. And again, yes, we've got some people that came in and already got planning approval, low-hanging fruit, people who know what they're doing, people who hired somebody and are very aggressive, and they're getting it done early. It's like the first, it's like when you play a video game, it's the very first level of the video game. It's going to get harder. People are not going to all be as experienced, they're not going to have as simple a project. I would bet dollars to donuts, the projects that were approved already are simple projects, they're almost identical to what was there. And they're situations, they might even be situations, I'd have to guess, where people have plans, because they built it within the last 15 or 20 years. Well, let's not use that and pat ourselves on the back and say, look how easy it is. Woolsey had early successes, too. And here we are, six years later, with the large number that aren't early successes, okay? It's going to happen again, which again is why we need to find ways in these meetings to get out of the way. We need to find ways to reach a consensus on what we are not going to interfere with and let you all do on your own. We're obviously not building your homes for you, we're obviously not preparing your plans, we're not going to get your materials. You need to do all that, and you need us to get out of the way on the few things that we are in the way on, so you can do those things on your own and get your home built. And Dean, just one thing, you know, you might want to, might see a path for getting your house rebuilt in 18 months. I suspect your neighbors on each side, or at least many of them on each side, are not. You really want to be sitting at home 18 months later, where construction's going on for the next three or four years on both sides of you? I mean, this is a community problem. We have a lot of people who have to rebuild, and even people who are going to move fast are going to be saddled with the people who can't move fast. So, and we need to find a way around that.
Okay. Anybody else?
I'll go. Yeah, I agree, if we have meetings and nothing happens from the meetings, it's all a lot of talk and not a lot of action. I like action. I like to talk, and then it's enough talk, and then I want to get to it, right? We have clear direction, and then we make moves to make them happen. So I'm all for meetings, as long as there's implementation. Ideas without implementation is just nothing. I would like to make sure that there is a Woolsey room at the rebuild center, where Woolsey, the affected by Woolsey have that attention. I'm going to say it again, I would like to have the workshop or some sort of attention to those survivors or affected. I would like, you know, I was, this is the work plan for the year that you were so kind to give to me, and I appreciate that, but we do have a city, the rest of the city, that has to be run. And while we're rebuilding eastern Malibu, I'd like to make sure that we always give attention to, like, the Malibu community lands, which I see here in the housing element. And so these meetings that are on the table are more or less less formal, so I agree with Bruce, where we can kind of tackle these items, and we keep our eye on the ball, which is also keeping western Malibu in a direction of a healthy stability. Because when we were rebuilding Woolsey, I did feel like the city came to a halt, and as it should have, right? But we really needed to also have enough bandwidth to give attention to everybody in the city. So I'm all for meeting, these truncated meetings, whatever they are, whatever you want to call them, these targeted meetings, as long as there's implementation, there's a direct action. Like, I would love to talk about those commercial conversions, because we're going to have, we have a housing crisis. People don't, might not want to live on property where their home was, it was surrounded by construction. And even if they finish their house, like Bruce was saying, they're still going to have to live amongst construction for possibly years. So if we can get creative and find alternate ways of housing them, keeping them in the community, going to our schools and shopping local, whether that is looking at Airbnbs, the issues of no host, or these short-term Airbnbs, and we open it up to Malibu residents, I would love to explore that and maybe have a meeting or an ad hoc about housing. We could talk about the commercial properties that would be open to converting. I mean, I think these are all ideas that make Malibu better. I would love to even have a workshop, I don't think this needs to be its own workshop, but Epic LA, Tyler, what do staff want? Are they, like, I would like to hear if staff is open to some sort of other system where LA is using computer systems. So let's have these dialogues and see if there's a different transparent way in which we can rebuild the city and support staff. So I'm good with meetings, like, meaning, let's meet, I have a life, but this is much more important right now. And I appreciate everybody's patience and the staff's hard work. Thank you.
Rayanne, Steve?
If we were to have these meetings starting at 10:00 or whatever, I'm trying to figure out how we integrate staff into that stuff. I mean, that's, you know, that's going to suck up a lot of, and, I mean, do we have to have them on, do we have to record them? Do they have to be on video? Or can we have a meeting where we all sit down and just talk about stuff, and walk away at the end and say, here's a list of stuff we talked about, here's what we finished, and we don't, and people who want to come can come, people who don't want to come don't have to come? It's much less formal than, you know, I mean, what we do here, where it's on video, whatever. How do we do that? If I had my drugs, I like that kind of an idea.
Yeah, Councilmember, you're into some of the questions or comments from the other council members, and maybe if I can clarify, this was a placeholder time slot, totally up to the council whether to use it or not. You probably, there'd probably be some weeks where there wouldn't be a topic to discuss. But we had the intent that it could absolutely be like the strategic work plans, if you wanted them to be that way, where we sat around tables and discussed. It's up to you if those are livestreamed or not.
Okay.
You know, that's your call. And it was kind of two-pronged, so there had also been direction from the council about reordering our council agenda, which could impact these meetings. There had been those comments, and that's why we were suggesting in the resolution to move council comments, reports to the end, so that you could focus on the city business. Because the thought was, if we're going to add more meetings during the week, try to streamline all meetings. So that's what the proposal is, it's really a two-pronged.
I think just two separate steps there.
Yeah, it's two-pronged.
And Councilmember, if I may, to answer your question about staff, it would be specific to what we're talking about in the work sessions, right? If it were to Councilmember Silverstein's topic of, we're going to work through the suggested policy document that we referenced during the public hearing process, right? That would only involve certain staff, but it would very much still be its own work session. So it wouldn't be as it is during regular meetings, where we have, you know, usually our department heads are very subject matter behind us. It would be whatever the topic is at hand, we would have those staff members available to participate in the meeting. But always in those meetings would be the city manager's office and the clerk's office, because it is a Brown Act notice meeting, so therefore formal minutes are still required. So there's still some of that that would need to take place.
Yeah, like, for the strategic work plan, we still have to post it, right? It still has to follow a structure, it's an open public meeting due to Brown Act purposes. And we were suggesting afternoons to try to give staff still time to manage the day. Yeah, if we start and do an all-day session, you're right, we're losing another day to actually implement the work that we're doing.
Do we have minutes at those workshops?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't realize that.
Yeah, we report back to the council the regular session.
Okay. Mary Ann?
I'm just trying to make it as simple as we can. I mean, you know, the...
There you go? Okay.
Did maybe catch up?
Yeah. I mean, yeah, I think they need to absolutely be subject focused. It just, for me, I just drafted down three items that I think that we should have some type of meeting on, and I think all three of them need to be held fairly quickly, which would be hard, home hardening and fire safety, sewer, which would include outside agencies such as Caltrans, the County Regional Water Quality Coastal Commission, and then Caltrans reimagining. You know, they were supposed to deliver their final draft, right? As Franklin, after Franklin? I can't remember which fire it was that interrupted that.
Monday, they were supposed to be Wednesday.
Okay.
It wasn't, just to let you know, that workshop is scheduled to resume in April.
April, yes. Yeah, so I don't know if that's something that we need to be involved in more heavily this time, just given the fact that we sort of have a blank canvas now, so maybe there are some things that maybe weren't imagined previously and are now. So I'm all for meeting, but I just want to stay focused on specific tasks that we're going to accomplish, and what things are appropriate for the council to be tackling, and what things we should just be directing staff in order to have them as their jobs are to take care of things. So I think a little guidance as to exactly kind of where council falls on things and where staff falls on things, and maybe just a little education for everybody as to kind of how the best way to navigate that is, that would be helpful for me.
Joe?
Yeah, so, well, taking a step back, obviously, we would need direction from this council on what the topic is going to be, so that we can guide that and provide some parameters around that. Ultimately, our role, as you know, is the implementers, right? We're on the administrative side, this is the policy side, and we have our two separate lanes. So we would be having the discussion centered around what policy that you want to take on this specific topic, that then we can go address. I know that's really high level, I don't know if that's getting to your, the nuts and bolts of your question, Mayor Protem Riggins, but that was our intent. So if there's one specific topic this week, we want to discuss this, we'll agendize that, and we'll try to come as prepared as we can to answer questions, or at least leave it open for that type of forum.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing with that, if we're doing them every other week, may I just add it, another item, which would be geocoastal engineering requirements, how to properly set it up? Because if we've got two weeks in between each one, obviously, that pushes the calendar out, and some of these things are a little bit more time-sensitive than other things on the rebuild process, you know, making sure that we're not holding up our residents as they're going through their design things and everything else, that we have some answers coinciding and/or implemented already, so.
And I guess I have a question, sorry to throw you off track. Is this in our, in the council's policy purview? Like, sometimes I wonder, are we stepping on the fire department, like, their toes? Shouldn't they come to us with some sort of home hardening? Is this the workshop where we decide what, you know, so it's like a discussion?
I, Councilmember Conrad, I smile only because there are often times that we go beyond our subject matter jurisdiction, but it depends on what the topic is. And we can always discuss any sort of policy thing, that then make a recommendation to the proper entity as well. So you have a fair amount of leeway in that regard, but sometimes it is out of our control of certain topics.
Right. Is this educating, are these workshops to educate the residents on how, and to inform them what they're rebuilding with, or are they educating us in regards to how we write or rewrite some? Or are they educating us in regards to how we write or rewrite some?
Our, our understanding was this was gonna be more meant for this council to be able to make policy decisions on specific topics that maybe we're not able to get to, but that's ultimately up to this body on, on how you want to proceed.
Let's have Bruce speak your comment, then I'll let you go.
Yeah, I mean, I don't envision, I, I think, as Dean said, it would be a waste of our time under this, under these circumstances to be having town halls, like, where we're just educating people about things, or even becoming educated. That's not what I had in mind. What I had in mind was actually getting things done, but things, again, which, which we can't get done in these 15, 20-minute discussions that we have after taking public comment. So, good example would be the, like, the question, I, I keep pushing, self-certification, what does it mean? I mean, not to educate ourselves on it, but let's have, let's have a full discussion, air out all of our thoughts about whether we do or don't want to go for it, and if we do want to go for it, what does it mean to start giving direction to the staff or actually putting pen to paper, and figuring out what it should look like. To me, that's, that's at least an all-day project. It requires a lot of education in advance of having that meeting, to be able to speak informatively with each other, and it's the kind of thing that needs to be done sooner than later. I, you know, how to, how to sell, how to harden your home? I mean, unless we're talking about adopting legislation that's going to impose obligations, that's not the point of these meetings. That's an education meeting. That doesn't have to be done under the Brown Act. Anybody could put together a seminar. I mean, the actual builders, general contractors, architects, whatever, can put on seminars about that. The fire department could be involved. Example, Marion gave an example, the sewer, I think that's a great, that's a great issue. Like, do we or don't we want to have a sewer in eastern Malibu? There's gonna be a lot of strong opinions on that in both directions, and we, and no decision is a decision. So if we don't ever have a meeting to figure that out, we've decided not to have one. I don't know where I'm gonna come out on that discussion, but that's the kind of thing we need to actually get together in a room, again, which the Brown Act prohibits us from doing unless we're having a workshop, and talk about it. And get the input of the residents who will be benefited by it, get the input of the residents who will be impacted by it, so that we understand the pros and the cons. As a lawyer, as a litigator, I heavily believe in the adversary system, that you gotta hear from people who have a vested interest in both directions, because they'll come up with all of the arguments that you won't necessarily think of if you're just trying to figure out what's best. And if you're all in one side of it, you won't understand the arguments on the other side. So you need to have people come talk to us who are advocates for each direction, and then we need to discuss what we've heard and come out with decisions. And again, we just, and we normally can do that on our, every other Monday night, but right now, there's, there's so many issues, and I, I had a list of issues, of things that I wanted to talk about. We need to make decisions on each one of those things. And maybe the decision is, we're not gonna make a decision, but we need to actually look at them and discuss them, because if we don't do that, we've rejected them. And I don't think that's the right way to move.
Okay. Let me try and summarize this the way I have heard everybody, and then kind of interject my feelings into it as well. And ironically, we spent almost 35 minutes talking about how to have a meeting. So it's not, it should not be lost on this here.
It's not ironic.
Yeah, it's true, yeah. First off, I think there's two and a half issues in this presentation. The first one, full issue is, what do we do about the meeting format? And I would like to suggest that since we just went to this format that we have now, and I'm kind of comfortable with it, I think it's working out reasonably well, we may be starting a little bit early for the fact that we always seem to have to take a break between the time we finish up the pre-public comments and public comments, but I can remember times when we actually have gone over. So I'm comfortable, let's, let's not tinker with this yet, it hasn't proven to be broken, and I'd like to make sure we're really comfortable with it if we can. But then let me move over to what I call the one and a half items. The major item in the one and a half is, what topics are we gonna cover? And I'm agreeing with Bruce, there's some things, and I think there are other people here, there are some things that we need to get on the table and discuss in some depth. And I, I've got a quick list here that are probably precursors before we can move some of these other issues about processing rebuilds. This is all about rebuilds right now. Things like, how are we gonna handle fees? What are we gonna do about self-certification? What's like-for-like? And what's a czar, what are we gonna do about czars? If we just covered those four items right there, that, or the format we have here, that's two months' worth of presentations, if they, if they take the full time. And I would encourage that we do set a list of hot topics for us to work on quickly and get some resolution on it. And I don't know that we need necessarily a workshop, I mean, we can always devolve into that if we need to, but if we just had a chance to have public comments, some staff input, and give some policy direction, I think we could make some serious movement here. And we need to figure out what the top four or five items might be, and get them on the list. And my other suggestion would be, all right, I'm willing to concede three months of this, and you're talking now about, eh, probably six to seven meetings in total out of it. So we only have six or seven topics, but I would suggest we put a time limit on these meetings, so that we say, look, we're gonna be here for two or three hours, it's from 3:00 until we finish that topic, and we've got an objective to get it done by a particular time. I know that we don't necessarily want to cut the discussion short, but sometimes we, we need a bell to say, time's up, we, we've negotiated this long enough. And I would encourage us to say, let's pick the five topics, or four topics, whatever we want to start with, put them in a priority, especially with staff, because you guys know what's coming up, it's gotta be dealt with, and let's put them on an agenda, let's, let's focus on them for a couple hours and get them resolved. That's where I would like to go with this. And I can see Steve's got his finger. I'm saying, let's quit talking and have a meeting. Yeah. Let's try it. I mean, till we do one and see how it works out, we won't know. So let's take a date, take a time, put some, a couple topics, and let's try it, see what the heck happens. I, I would, I go along with that, if we could suggest maybe one or two hot topics, and let's put them on the agenda, and if we can get the first one done, and we still got some more time, we move on to the second one. Otherwise, our format is, let's, let's work them through at least one at a time. What's the thoughts?
Sounds good. Sewers, czar, and fees. Just throwing it out there.
Well, sir, I, I think we gotta figure out what we're gonna do about fees first.
Okay. Well, in order of whichever operation.
But whatever wants, everybody wants to put.
Well, I mean, I would suggest fees, that could be on a regular agenda, couldn't it? I mean, it, it was for Woolsey, so I don't know that we necessarily need to dedicate a special meeting to it.
It could be, I mean, obviously, you could put anything on the, the regular council agenda while you get through it, is a whole nother discussion, and what you want to focus on that even. But it depends on your format, too. So, you know, this is offering you the opportunity to have more of the strategic work plan style.
Yeah, and let's, let's, let's first off decide, and I, I like Steve's suggestion, let's try before we get too deep into this. You know, like, one meeting, and let's pick one or two hot topics that we feel like, and I'd love to hear from the staff, if they know of anything that, that we need to know that's impeding the rebuild side.
I think the most important first subject we need to resolve is, what is a like-for-like?
Okay.
Because people are shooting for doing like-for-like rebuilds, and the governor's order has cleared the way for it, but we have to say what, what a like-for-like means, what, what is substantially in the same place. And, you know, Tyler had told us what he thought it meant, but, and he, and we might agree, but we need to resolve those issues, so that those people can start putting their plans together and getting them approved and moving forward. To me, that's, that's the number one first order of business. And then my, my thought also is, we need to decide, again, not, not have it happen by inaction. What is our vision of the use of the rebuild center? Is it for people who are gonna get a full CDP? Yeah, for, for, for a different home, or is it only for the like-for-likes? Or is it for somewhere in between? And what additional accommodations, if any, are we gonna make to help the people who are doing like-for-like, aside from having the center that exists? I think we need to iron that out, and again, my view is, we need to be doing everything we can to figure out ways to make sure that anyone who wants to do like-for-like, plus 10%, is gonna be able to do it as efficiently, economically, and expeditiously as they can, and keeping the other rebuilds out of their way.
If, if there's some consensus on picking like-for-like, and I would like to suggest self-certification, because that seems to be a hot topic with a lot of the people in the audience. As those two, to light, light the views on this, and let's, if...
Well, I would say, let's throw in geocoastal engineering requirements, because I think that's gonna be something that's very important to the conversation as to...
After you explain that to me, I'll...
Is that part of the self-certification question?
Yes and no.
Sounds like a discussion.
Because, I mean, even with self-certification, they're still gonna have to have guidelines. And so making sure, you know, are we going to allow multiple properties to propose a joint waiver-up study? Or are we going to require that each property is going to have their, their own? So are we gonna, to set up something that, with the geo, you know, are we, do we have enough in Big Rock to be able to?
Okay, I, I'm buying in the program. I think if we said, we got three items, like-for-like, rebuild center as one item, and another item being self-certification, and then the geo, we got enough on our plate to take care of three meetings.
Yeah. Well, could we, can we set it up where we have them all on the agenda for the same meeting, and that way, we're not just noticing it for one, and then we can adjourn it to the next one, similar how we did last week? Because it would be nice if we get through one really quick, that we have another one teed up to just go for that, that second time period.
It's more about staff dedication, I mean, ask, can they be ready to have more than one? Alexis?
Short answer, yes. But I, I would say, as I understood the direction or consensus of the council, it was to place these three items on the first agenda, understanding on the first special meeting agenda, and we work through them.
Okay.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't appreciate that, I thought we were talking about three separate meetings, but...
I did, too.
I mean, I'm, if we put too many things on a meeting, we're gonna get none of them done. That's the problem.
Right, but if we do, put too few, then we're gonna be stretching out longer than we need to.
Yeah, I agree with you. If, if we were to put two or three on, but with the understanding that the mere fact that we've got multiple items doesn't mean we're, we need to rush through the meeting to get to all of them, we'll spend as much time as we need to get through, number one, but no more than the entire meeting.
Yeah, and the meeting needs to have a time limit.
Yeah.
Yeah, and only because we don't want to keep staff here unnecessarily. So I, how about this, guys? What if we say, first two items, first meeting, maximum three hours, and if we get through both of them, that's great, if we don't, we can always hold them over, and we just try and stay focused on that.
I was gonna suggest...
Three items.
Four to five hours, including a lunch, a working lunch.
Yeah, but we're gonna do it in the afternoon, 3:00.
Well, we haven't decided that, that's what you're saying.
Oh, okay.
Is it possible to do a 10:00 or 11:00 o'clock meeting? And what, what day would you recommend? I'll defer, I'm gonna have to hurt a Joe.
There was a suggestion that says, the staff, maybe staff these times in the morning to get stuff done, and, you know, I don't think we want to screw them up. Yeah, and there's only so many hours that are available. So... And I'm, I'm kind of leaning toward two or three hours maximum at a time, just to make sure we don't overburn anybody.
How about three to seven with a late dinner that's served?
Three items, three hours.
Three items, three hours, I think has, has some merit. That would be three to six. And don't, don't take time for lunch or dinner, just plow through. Let's try three to six, see what happens. Yeah, let's do, let's do it at least for one, all right? Do I have a good sense of something?
We can always change, if it doesn't work, we try this for now.
Yeah.
I agree.
All right?
We do have one point to make. So the first day that would be up on this list is the 20th, but we actually had a conflict, because we had the SCE town hall that night. And we do agree that the afternoon is ideal going forward, but that runs into an issue on the 20th. Otherwise, then we'd be looking at two Thursdays after that. So we could make an exception to do a little bit earlier on the 20th. But yes, it's a balance of, are we meeting all day, or staff, you know, do the staff have time to actually work on anything, so?
The Edison thing's at 6:00?
It is at 5:00.
5:30.
5:30.
And, and we do need time to set up that, so 4:00, we'll be in here getting everything teed up for the SCE.
But I realize this council is thinking more, we'd be meeting in the NPR, correct? For the, for these meetings?
Yeah, I, does, I actually have a family conflict on the 20th.
Okay, so then the 20th may not work anyways.
Sir, can we do it the next, the...
Two weeks later, I won't be here. I, I don't think it could, should wait two weeks later, I don't think so.
I mean, is there magic to Thursday? There's no other day we could do it?
We were trying to spread out between city council meeting and, and posting and everything else, so that was kind of our, our magic happy medium. But is that a hard and fast? Not necessarily, but it, you know, it's, it's tough to find the right days in the week for everybody with our set schedules and our set, our current set posting of the agendas for regular council meetings, and all the other special meetings that are occurring, and the planning commission as well.
And I gotta tell you, and Dr., it's not about any one of us, but there is a time limit as to how many times we can just postpone stuff on our other side. I've got business stuff and so on to take care of. We've got a special council meeting already on 27th, we've got, if, the 3rd, I'm out of country.
What's on the 27th?
We've got the...
Regular council.
Special planning meeting.
More information, special planning meeting on the 27th. On March?
Yeah, and we have something in March on 27th.
What is the 27th?
What's a special planning meeting?
We all need a calendar.
I don't have that either.
Alexis says, am I wrong?
That was last month.
Yeah.
February 27th.
No, it's, I had it, March 27th, okay.
I mean, I, I hear Joe what you're saying, and I'm not pushing, but it's, you know, to me, ideally, the 18th or the 19th to do this would be great. It's, you know, strike while the iron's hot, if we can.
We, we do already have our special meeting for the strategic work plan on the 19th, if council wants...
That's what I've got, yeah.
If, if council wants to tack on that, I will just say as well, we are scheduling community meetings on Tuesdays. Additionally, if, if council were to look at Tuesdays, it's a bit difficult for our broadcast contract folks, just in terms of, of getting all that Tuesdays evenings as a conflict.
We don't broadcast it.
So, okay. There was a question about, is there magic to Thursday? There's some coordination there.
Let me throw this out, I mean, we, I didn't realize, we have a work plan meeting on the 19th. I mean, right now, this is the, right now, this is the most important work plan we have. Could we not postpone the long-term work plan for a couple weeks and actually use that period of time that we have already allocated to do what we're talking about?
Short answer is yes, to steal something from W City Manager earlier, of course, you can do that. You know, it's the normal interval to check in on the strategic work plan. I, I know, as we're trying to do all of this, it's reprioritizing everything that we have as a council, and, you know, there's the inquiries coming in of, where are we on this? Where are we at? Why aren't we working on this? And, and so it's part of that discussion to say, okay, is the fire rebuild and everything we're doing here, is that our highest priority? And what are we all agreeing to that's gonna now fall by the wayside for a while, or just be deferred? And so that was the point of that discussion, but you can absolutely put that off with the understanding that things are...
There's these community, sorry to cut you off, community meeting series, and we have them every Tuesday at 4:00 PM. What if we met two hours before that?
Those are not notice special meetings.
No, 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 so we, those are not, but then could we meet what we're trying to do? The next one's on Tuesday, March 18th, make a notice special meeting before that? I, I'm kind of inclined to take over the strategic work plan for that one time, and then we'll...
Let's, let's play that one through.
Move that, because if we do have that...
Start there and then see how we, how we go from there.
Yeah, we obviously have important things that are not Palisades rebuilds, but right now, this is the most pressing issue in our city. It's gotta take precedence over our general work plan.
And, look, a lot of this is... Look, we've gotta get some things set up, so that the rebuild process can get going. And these are open items, like like-for-like and self-certification, that are, that are going to be templates for how we operate. So let's take, I agree, let's take the 19th, let's make that, let's make our, our trial run, and three to six on that date, and let's go see.
Do we have a time for that? Because.
3:00?
It's at 1:00 right now.
Well, okay.
Yeah, why don't we use the exact time that it was already allocated for?
All right.
1:00?
Yeah, one to, one to 5:00 or something like that. I don't want, I don't want the staff to get burned out staying late.
And are we going to have to, are we going to have to video that meeting?
Let's don't.
I thought a camera just gets set up in the corner of the room and.
Yeah, we have a process, like, we need to record it, one way or the other.
Yeah, I mean, anyone from the public is entitled to come sit in the room, they actually can participate if it's a workshop, and anyone doesn't want to come is, can, can try to pay attention to it on Zoom, even though it's, it's next to impossible.
Yeah, but I don't.
Just for clarification, we do not have hybrid capabilities in the multipurpose room at this moment, so just want to make sure that everyone's understood.
And you do have to be done by 5:00 anyway, so you can walk over to the rebuild center open house.
All right. Okay, we got it worked out?
Is there a closed session before that? Is there a closed session?
Yeah, there'll be a closed session before that, I believe.
So I just need to put that on my calendar. It's an hour before the start time.
Closed session for, on Wednesday, the 19th?
Yes, there'll be, I believe there'll be a closed session, Kelsey's coordinating it. I think she's cleared the time with you guys previously.
So that would be noon.
So we just.
We do have a, a closed session that is going to be a special meeting for this Wednesday?
Yeah.
That is, that is happening, that'll be at 10:00 AM on this, this Wednesday, the 12th?
To do the second reading of the zoning change.
Well, the closed session's on.
The adjourned public hearing from, from today will be at 11:00 PM. Yeah, so there's, there will be a special closed session noticed for Wednesday to begin at 10:00 AM.
Yes.
We are Wednesday at 10:00, and we get the 19th starting at noon time.
Yeah, this closed session will be at noon, and then the.
Okay.
The regular meeting at 1:00.
Okay.
1:00 until 5:00, then we go over and have cookies and milk.
Before we pass over this, I agree with Doug that we shouldn't tinker with our format for general meetings, but I know Helen might feel otherwise, so, I mean, we should all weigh in on that.
We don't, yeah, I mean, if we feel good about it, it's good with me, I'm fine with it. I haven't really been here long enough to get a feeling, I just know that we talk a lot, and I just want to be respectful of the public's time and make sure that we get to where we're going and, you know, stay on track.
See, I, I think if the public makes their comments, it's important for us to be able to respond to them while they're here, rather than four hours later.
I do, too.
That's, that's the whole reason why it's set up the way it is.
Well, and I also think that, you know, we often announce things that are going on in the community, the city manager has their announcement of things that are going on within the city hall, and so I think there's a variety of reasons for that.
Okay. Do we have any more guidance from us? Oh, it's Caitlin.
I did have one more question, sorry for staff. Has there been a study done on the fees that were waived during Woolsey with regards to how much we could have made, how much we lost, how that whole thing went? Just because when we do the fee, if we're going to waive fees, I'd like to have more information on the past.
If that's a topic, and I do want to just bring that up, understanding fee waivers is something that the council wants to consider, but not on this first special agenda, as I understood it. But we do have that history in terms of what decisions the council made when it came to waivers for Woolsey.
And that could be, we could take up the fee waiver during a regular meeting. That's probably not as hard to do. All right, if we've got consensus?
Yes, and for clarity for clerk, although I don't know if the clerk's asking me for this, but I'm going to say it anyway. So our recommended actions, we are not taking the recommended actions and doing an alternative to take over the special meeting on the 19th.
And then moving forward, it will be Thursdays at 3:00? Is that the understanding?
Yeah, and when we can fit it in.
Not to exceed three hours.
Let's see how we do on the 19th.
Okay.
Do you want to set this to, because they want to plan out?
I think we should set it as a placeholder and make sure that we have that opportunity if it's successful.
And we can always cancel it if it doesn't work.
That's right.
That is a placeholder in the council, give direction, it's a regular meeting, if they want to, what they want to set at the next meeting.
Exactly.